Good afternoon. We're gonna get started. Good afternoon, everyone. We're gonna get started now. We have a pretty long list, so we wanna get started as soon as possible and give people an opportunity to testify. Thank you. The hearing is called to order. I recognize the presence of a quorum of committee members, including, as you see, Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Bass, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Diamond, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Green, and obviously myself. This is a public hearing in a committee hold. The purpose of this hearing is to take testimony on Resolution Number 190622. Mr. Christmas, could you please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution 190622 authorizing the Committee of the Hold to hold hearings regarding the Plainview Project database on objectionable social media posts of law enforcement officers.
Thank you. Before we proceed with the witness list, Chair would like to recognize Councilman Green for opening statements.
Thank you, Council President. As we begin this hearing, I will be remiss if we not think about the history that we've had here in the city of Philadelphia. And when you think about the history of the Police Department in the city of Philadelphia and the community, it is one that has a, as I would describe, a complex relationship. When you think about Rizzo and MOVE, Stop and Frisk and the Police Athletic League, this has been a complex relationship in the history of the city of Philadelphia. When we had the unfortunate situation of August 15th where six officers were wounded, we pray for the Philadelphia Police Department. But when we have information that was revealed by the Plainview Project, we also want accountability from the Police Department. On a personal level, this is also a complex relationship. I've had two uncles who served in the Philadelphia Police Department. I was a member of the District Attorney's Office and worked with the Police Department. But also, once leaving the DA's office, I was actually racially profiled by the Police Department. And also have a son who's on the autism spectrum. And so I applaud the work that the Police Department has done over the years, especially this upcoming Saturday where Officer Tally, Roz Tally, and other officers will work with the Audible for Autism event this Saturday. But also, as a father of an autistic son, who's an African-American male, age of 18, I'm also concerned that as he is walking and leaving school in the city of Philadelphia, could he possibly get into a situation or be viewed in a situation because he cannot communicate like others and have an unfortunate situation occur? So, on a personal level, I also have a complex relationship with the Police Department. So to me, this hearing provides an opportunity to have a conversation about this complex relationship that we've had over the years between the community and the Philadelphia Police Department. I wanna thank the researchers at the Plainview Project who were not able to attend this hearing for revealing this information, not only here in the city of Philadelphia, but cities across the nation. I've talked to some of my colleagues in National League of Cities who are also dealing with this issue. Also wanna thank Solomon Jones and the Rally for Justice Coalition for their leadership on this issue. My goal is that through this hearing, we can start to rebuild some of the trust that's needed in the city of Philadelphia with all the issues that we have. And I think this hearing provides one step in our opportunity to have this conversation as we look to address the issues in our city from a public safety and criminal justice perspective, in addition to the fact that we'll be bringing in a new police commissioner as we try to move forward as a city together. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. First, I'd like to thank everyone for being here this evening. Genuinely appreciate your participation. It is important, and I can't emphasize enough, the need to be at a public hearing regardless of its location. Too often, we don't participate at a level that we should. That's why I'm really glad and extremely impressed at the level of participation. We had the opportunity to participate in the forum this summer at Mother Bethel Church and was quite impressed with that. I wanna commend those individuals that pulled that meeting together and the level of participation of the simple reality, and I concur with the Councilmen in terms of the complicated nature of the relationship. And I don't think this is any different than any other large municipality, but I do like to think that the city of Philadelphia is different in that we are about solutions-based strategy. What we hope comes out of this is not just simply a conversation and level of testimony. We hope that next year, we can look at this particular point in time where we actually made changes to all aspects of the relationship between the police and the incitatory, because at the end of the day, citizens are clearly not going anywhere, police are not going anywhere. We gotta figure out a way to make this work, because it is extremely important. So I wanna again, thank you all for being here. We will hear witnesses from the administration, also from the advisory council and the Defender's Office, and then we will go directly to participation and witnesses from the general public. So with that, I wanna thank you. I'd like to call our first witnesses to the table. I'd like to call Christine Coulter, the Acting Commissioner of the Philadelphia Police Department, and Brian Abernathy, who is currently the Managing Director of the City of Philadelphia. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council President, Members of Council. Prior to beginning my testimony today with the indulgence of Council President and the esteemed body, I'd like to take a few minutes to address concerns surrounding a T-shirt that I wore many years ago. Although at the time, I didn't recognize the inference as a police officer I should have, and I should have more diligently examined the language on the shirt and be more carefully before accepting and ultimately wearing that shirt. When I look at it now through a 2019 lens, it is clear that it was a bad decision on my part, and I would not wear that shirt today. Certainly, as I look at the past week and the hurt and damage it has caused people who I care about to communities that I have always cared about, I should have known. I am profoundly sorry that anything that I have done could have caused such hurt. An incident involving the late Mr. King highlighted dark times in policing, and I want to assure you that I have worked my entire career to make sure that we move past those times by policing with fairness and compassion. I hope that my work in the 16th and 25th districts, my dedication to those communities and to this city, have shown that the care that I have for the people of Philadelphia and the communities that they are part of. I sincerely hope that a careless decision that I made over 25 years ago doesn't overshadow the work that I've done. I'm profoundly sorry for the pain that the shirt and the picture has caused, not to me, but to the city and the communities that we serve. I've been humbled by the outpouring of support from those communities since this regrettable incident occurred. I will be happy to meet with any Members of Council who wish to discuss this further privately. If, with your indulgence, now go into my testimony regarding the Plainview. Good afternoon, President Clark and Members of City Council. I am Christine Coulter, the Acting Police Commissioner in the City of Philadelphia. First, I'd like to thank Council President Clark and other Members of City Council that are called for the hearing. Hate has no place in the Philadelphia Police Department, or any police department for that matter. The social media posts revealed by Plainview Projects by certain active members of the Philadelphia Police Department were disgusting and outright appalling. Without doubt, the only, only a small percentage of our officers were involved, that the trust of Philadelphia Police Department by the communities we have sworn to serve has been seriously compromised. It is for this reason that I welcome this public hearing. It is important, not just for City Council, but for the people and communities of the city, to know exactly how the Police Department has addressed this crisis and the action plan that we have created to address the underlying issues to help restore the trust that has clearly been broken. The mission of the Philadelphia Police Department is to be the model of excellence by working in partnership with communities and others to fight crime, the fear of crime, and enforce the laws while safeguarding the constitutional rights of all people, to provide quality service to all of our residents and visitors, and to create a work community and commitment where we recruit, train, and develop an exceptional team of employees. I truly believe in this mission. The statement has been ingrained into every recruit leaving the academy. The Plainview Project revelations affected each element of our core mission. As such, immediate but thoughtful, fair, and deliberate actions were needed. Short-term and long-term action plans were developed. We needed to address potentially biased officers patrolling our streets, how to protect our employees that were also offended by the disgusting remarks and the speech made by certain officers, how to investigate employee speech in a fair and consistent manner, and how to satisfactorily rehabilitate certain officers, remove others, and how to continuously address the underlying issues of hate within our ranks. The Police Department, like any larger organization, is a microcosm of our society. But unlike society, the Police Department and its officers are held to a higher standard by the people that we serve. The revelations from the Plainview Project are unprecedented, but the Philadelphia Police Department's swift and decisive response has also been unprecedented. The faith and trust of our communities, which is the linchpin of a department's mission, was and remains at stake. So let me explain the course of events and actions that were taken and will be taken in the future to help break, build back some of the trust that we lost due to the actions of a few. We first became aware of the problematic social media posts on February 5th, 2019, via an email to our Public Affairs Unit from the Plainview Project and Justice Watch Organization. The email mentioned the posts made and requested comments from then Commissioner Ross, but did not specifically identify any officers. On February 8th, 2019, the Public Affairs Unit received by U.S. Mail the Plainview Project name of seven officers associated with the social media posts, and again, requested a comment from then Commissioner Ross. The Commissioner provided his comment via email on February 15th, 2018. An official investigation into the seven officers was officially opened on February 18th, 2019. On Saturday, June 1st, 2019, the Plainview Project researcher identified 5,000 offensive or potentially offensive Facebook entries posted by 328 active-duty officers. The researchers subsequently made their results available via an online database. The Internal Affairs Investigation was immediately initiated. Because of the First Amendment implications of the social media posts, on June 4th, 2019, the Police Department met with both Civil Rights and Labor and Employment Units of the City Solicitor's Office to seek legal advice and to ensure the action plans were constitutionally sound. The Solicitor's Office then contracted with an outside law firm in order to conduct an independent and expedited First Amendment analysis of each subject post. That legal analysis was necessary to assist Internal Affairs in properly distinguishing constitutionally protected speech from unprotected speech that could be properly disciplined. Within hours of this meeting, it was determined that certain posts were so disruptive to the Police Department's operations that immediate action was needed to safeguard the public, as well as officers required to work with these individuals. Hence, it was decided that Internal Affairs should identify and prioritize posts that most severely erode the public's trust in the department, namely, those posts clearly advocating violence or death against any protected class, including but not limited to race, ethnicity, national origin, sex, and religion. These offers would be immediately removed from the street to administrative duties. As Internal Affairs triaged other problematic posts, the number of officers removed from the street grew over the following week to a total of 72 officers. All of these officers were assigned to administrative duties during the interim of their investigations. It was at this time that we determined that the Philadelphia Police Training Bureau should send information out to the entire Police Department reiterating our existing social media policy, off-duty policy, anti-discrimination policy, and race and policing policy. In addition, radio clips were generated to ensure that messages were being received. We understood very early that the need for something much more than reiteration of existing policies to address the core issues of hate and bias. For this reason, we are contracting with an outside provider to begin implementing anti-racist implicit bias training for every sworn officer in the department. This program will begin this fall, and we believe, and we believe a one-and-done type of training for this type of issue would be woefully insignificant, insufficient. The needs, the needs constant attention and with the help of funding from the Mayor's Office and the training would now become an annual and ongoing training requirement for the foreseeable future. Next, we realized that the investigations, dismissals, discipline, and training were simply not enough. We must proactively monitor the social media activities of our sworn personnel for hate and bias indicators. We have long recognized that we have a duty and responsibility to our citizens to weed out corrupt, corruption and instill faith and trust in the department. We now realize the duty and responsibility to proactively weed out hate amongst our ranks is equally important. As such, the Police Department has committed to acquiring technological resources necessary to actively monitor the social media accounts of active officers. It is our responsibility to identify problematic officers who tarnish the reputation of the department and take necessary action. Like corruption, we cannot rely on the state or federal government, or even private researchers to find solutions to this problem. This is our responsibility, and we will make every effort to identify any sworn personnel with any indications of hate or bias in their actions as officers, and we will take the necessary action. So at this point, please let me run through the results of the Internal Affairs Investigation and the Police Board of Inquiry. Summary of the Internal Affairs Investigation, there were 343 officers investigated. The number is higher than the original 328, because IAD investigated additional violators while going through posts and looking through our policy. The disposition of those cases was 193 of those complaints were sustained, which meant that the officers violated our existing policies and were not protected under free speech. 100 had no departmental violations, 23 were unfounded, and 27 remain open at this time because officers who are in long-duty, sick or IOD status have yet to be interviewed on this case. Disciplinary summary is as follows. Commissioner's direct action was taken and 15 officers were recommended to be dismissed. Of those, now nine of those officers retired prior to being dismissed. Primary charges was any incident conduct or course of conduct which indicates that an employee has little or no regard for their responsibility as a member of the department. In addition, Commissioner's direct action was taken against seven additional officers with two pending, with a 30-day suspension and not dismissal, with the charge of an incident or conduct or course of conduct that indicates that an employee has no regard for their responsibility as a member of the department. There were 148 cases where command-level discipline applied. They were cases that did not advocate violence against a group or violated our policy and posted things that were inappropriate. The charge is there as the failure to comply with the Police Commissioner's orders, directives, memorandums, or regulations, or any oral or written order of supervisor. Of those, only three received training and counseling. 132 had IAD notifications, and there's still 11 cases pending. Most of those cases are now scheduled to go to the Police Board of Inquiry and will be heard by a panel in the command-level area, where that range of penalty is a reprimand to five days. Also, with regards to the 72 officers removed from the street, while 15 were separated from the department, all remaining officers were required to undergo a specifically developed training course before they were returned to street duty. As you can see, the Philadelphia Police Department did not attempt to make excuses, but rather tackled this crisis directly. We took immediate action with the matter when it was first discovered. Swift, fair, and deliberate actions were taken to conduct the investigation, but also the corresponding discipline. This is clearly an unprecedented response, but the department has also committed to enduring this crisis and ensuring that it never is repeated. We have committed ourselves to ongoing training and self-monitoring and will, without hesitation or reservation, take action against any officer who undermines our mission by demonstrating hate or bias against any protected class of people, and will protect our residents and our employees from, from being subjected to such offensive behavior. It is my sincere hope that the unparalleled actions that the Philadelphia Police Department has taken to date and will continue to take will begin the process of restoring faith and trust of our residents in the Police Department. This concludes my testimony and be happy to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before I call on the next witness, I'd like to recognize, I'd like to recognize a good friend, State Senator Vincent Hughes is here today. Good afternoon, Senator. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Mr. Abernathy.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President and Members of Council. I'm Brian Abernathy, the City's Managing Director, and I'm here to testify on Resolution 190622 regarding the Plainview Project and the Police Department's social media policy. Many of the comments captured by the Plainview Project were appalling, made even more appalling because they came from those entrusted to protect the public. As Commissioner Coulter outlined, the Police Department responded quickly, thoughtfully, and forcefully, making sure that offices were disciplined and in some cases terminated when their words and actions eroded the public's trust and negatively impacted the department's operations, while at the same time ensuring that the First Amendment protections were followed. As much as I'd like to say that the issues that led to the Plainview Project are in our past, I know we have much more work to do. Bigotry plagues us, racism, misogyny, religious intolerance, homophobia, ageism, and plagues not just the Police Department, but much of our society today. While the Police Department may be the most visible example and may have a broad impact because of its size and scope of work, these issues unfortunately can occur in other departments. While the Mayor and I may not be able to read the hearts and minds of every employee, we can and are doing a better job of training our employees on diversity and inclusion and sexual harassment. We've also updated our social media policy and continue to educate staff about what they can and should say on social media. Mayor Kenny has made diversity and inclusion a pillar of his administration, and he has consistently stressed the expectation that Philadelphia's workforce more closely reflect the population it serves. For the first time, diversity and inclusion training has been provided for leadership and hiring of managers across the cities in all departments. These trainings have helped us improve the exempt hiring practice to include diverse outlets for job postings to improve the candidate pool, active recruitment in neighborhoods and schools of color, required diverse hiring panels to review diverse candidate pools, and each cabinet member and department had regularly reviews the diversity of its exempt workforce. Additionally, recognizing that leadership is derived from the rank and file, we have begun to review civil service regulations to determine if certain job descriptions and requirements inadvertently place barriers to diversity. Already, there have been changes to certain job classifications in Parks and Recreation, and the fighter, firefighter, fighter exam has been improved. While these improvements are important, more is needed. One training is not sufficient to make long-term change, and more in-depth training around bias is necessary. To this end, the city continued its investment in diversity and inclusion training by hiring a full-time trainer in August. She is developing a new course curriculum, which she plans to test with various groups before a new training program formally begins in November. We also expect recommendations to mandate regular training for managers and supervisors. The city's sexual harassment policy has also been updated, and the policy requires employee training every three years. The training is geared to employee and his or her role, whether that employee is a manager, and what the manager's responsibilities are should they become aware of an incident. HR managers have received training on how to conduct investigations, and every employee will receive bystander training by the end of the calendar year. The new policy also creates mandatory reporting guidelines, an online complaint form, a centralized tracking system, and updates on sexual orientation and gender identity. More importantly, executives and leadership also receive training because it is our responsibility to create and maintain a culture that is diverse, inclusive, and free from harassment, intimidation, or discrimination. Finally, the city is reviewing its social media policy. The current policy provides guidelines for personal social media use and reminds city employees that while they are entitled to personal opinions, they should use caution when using social media. Generally, the policy recommends that individuals do not use social media in a manner that violates intellectual property rights of others, threatens, harasses, or defames others, or disrupts or undermines city's government's mission by engaging in hate speech against a protected class, or inciting violence, among other things. We are reviewing this language and intend to make it stronger. While the courts have protected public employees' rights to free speech, they have also recognized public employers' rights to limit activity that may impact or disrupt our operations, effectiveness, or relationship with the public. Striking that balance is challenging, and ensuring that employees understand that their actions have consequences is key. Additionally, we recognize that a policy is only as effective as enforcement. The city, like the Police Department, is exploring technology that may assist in monitoring social media accounts. One of the principles of the Kenny administration is to treat our workforce and residents with dignity and respect. While we may not be able to fully heal the hearts and minds of every employee who has biased views, we can do a better job of making sure that bias does not impact the services we provide to the public or erode the public's trust for our government. As Managing Director, I'm committed to doing everything I can to make sure that that happens. Before I close, I wanna recognize the challenges facing the Philadelphia Police Department and touch on the administration's search for the next police commissioner. Recent events have rocked the department: the Plainview Project, allegations of sexual harassment, the shootout in North Philadelphia, a far-too-violent summer, and Commissioner Ross's retirement. Any of these things is difficult to manage through. To face each of them in a matter of months can be devastating. The city is lucky to have an executive and leadership team in place that have provided guidance and support to our officers, and more importantly, to the public. We have challenges. Everybody recognizes that. But we intend to tackle and overcome each of them. As we look to our future, the city will be embarking on a targeted search that includes internal and external candidates for our commissioner. Working with the Police Executive Research Forum, we expect that we will find the right person to lead our department through these challenges by the end of the calendar year. Like all of our hiring practices, the interview process will be closed to the public. However, we know that the public deserves a voice in this process. We have launched a survey that is available online and on paper to gather the public's feedback on what issues they think are most important, on what characteristics the next commissioner should have, and to provide any other feedback they think is important for us to consider in our search. This feedback will generate questions that the next commissioner will be asked during the interview process. Thank you for allowing me to testify, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner, I have a couple of quick questions for you, and then I'll recognize Members of the Body. Commissioner, can you give me a little clarity? In your testimony, you state that 148 officers received command-level discipline. Can you tell me exactly what does that mean?
What that means is that it's a violation of a policy that the Commissioner put out. We have a disciplinary code, so it gives a matrix as to what qualifies in that category. And they were the ones that I explained that did not necessarily spew hatred or violence to a group, but maybe posted some, their opinion on something while being in uniform or something that indicates that they're a police officer, just saying something that was inappropriate, but not the level of violence or hatred towards a specific group or a protected group. So those are the ones that had a small number of posts, regardless of a police officer, it would have been under 10, and a supervisor under 5, that didn't fall into that highest level of category, but will still be disciplined, but it's done through the Police Board of Inquiry. They're not, if it doesn't have the possible charge of dismissal or 30 days, then it's handled by contract through our disciplinary process of going to the Police Board of Inquiry. They sit for a panel of a police captain, a supervisor, and a peer. The case gets heard, and then that discipline is meted out there, and that can be anywhere from a reprimand to five days.
So the discipline could include suspension, desk duty, letter of reprimand, dismissal?
For command-level, it can only commit, it can only be up to a five-day suspension.
Up to five days?
Yes, for command-level discipline.
And that's currently, that's currently, ma'am, hold on. Ma'am, 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 you'll have time to have questions and testify. Right now, the questions are for Members of the Body, and then we'll get to a point where you can testify. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
All right. So it varies. Do you, do we have a, is that an internal document, or is that a document that's available?
That would be our disciplinary code, and it is available, yes.
All right. We'd like to have a copy of that. If you can provide that through the Chair. If you can provide that through the chair of the members of the committee so we can get a better perspective on that. Also, in your testimony, you state that 132 officers receive IA notifications only. What does that mean?
There'd be notifications that they did not violate the policy and did not fall in that group. And I'll give you an example that'll make it a little bit easier to understand. When the Plainview Project sent things over, they sent anybody who had a post. One of those posts was something like an officer was killed in another jurisdiction, and they wrote, "May he rest in peace." Not a violation of any policy, not a violation of anything. Someone then commented on their post, which then put them in that category that now they're looking at the post. So there were posts that, both on interpretation from what was meant, as well as the law department's protect... The law firm protecting that it was protected speech and they were authorized to do it. They were the notifications from IA, just saying that an investigation was conducted and you did not violate a policy, nor was it not protected speech. So a lot of them were comments that somebody made that were not related to hate or any group, but because someone commented on their post, they fell into that project category.
Okay. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Abernathy, Commissioner Coulter, I had a chance to review both of your testimonies. And in both your testimonies, you talked about diversity and inclusion training for the Police Department, a review of civil service regulations, the city's new sexual harassment policy, reviewing the city's social media policy, as well as implementing anti-racist, implicit-bias training for the Police Department. Also throughout your testimony, you talked about the desire to rebuild trust. Based on these actions, do you believe these will be sufficient to rebuild trust between the community and the Police Department?
I believe it's a start. I think it's going to take a whole lot more than training and effort on both sides to move us to that point, but you have to start somewhere, and we have to make sure that everybody that's employed by our department, at minimum, has the required training. And the training that we were looking at, which we did pilot, we had Dr. Marx come in for three days, provided the training to some of our command staff, some of our police officers. We even gave a seat to the PAC Commission to make sure we were hitting the marks we wanted to. I don't want to just check a box. I want training that's meaningful, that's beneficial to the officers. So we had a three-day, where he conducted the class for three days, just to make sure that this was indeed something well beyond anything we've ever been able to give our officers before. And it was. It was professionally done with a lot of insight to things that, you know, the average officer or trainer isn't thinking about every day. And it really was thought-provoking. It was... And looking at the training itself, we had gotten the recommendation from the LA Police Department, who used the same person, and as a result, found that they had so much that they could offer, and it was going to give us what we needed. We felt that it was something that we should at least look at, and it turns out that it was a more competent level of training and a world-renowned trainer coming to do it.
And so who was the entity or individual that provided that training?
Dr. Marx.
Okay. And I guess the question, and this is similar to the issue that came out of the Starbucks incident that also happened here in the city of Philadelphia. How will that... I mean, that training was a three-day training, and that was for...
It's a one-day training for every officer. It won't be a trainer-trainer. It would be every officer going through the training block.
So then how do you main... I mean, because you... Just like with Starbucks, will they close all the stores for one day and provide all the training, but you can have someone get employed the next day or two days later that never had that type of training? And I understand you're going to do a train-the-trainer perspective, but how do you start to change the culture in reference to the department?
Well, initially, after all the officers go through, we're not believing it should be a one-time deal. We also want to make sure that every recruit that goes through subsequently also has that training, which we require quarterly when a class is coming through, have that opportunity to go through it. But we have to look at not just that baseline training, but what we're doing and modeling every single day.
Mr. Abernathy, did you want to respond to that question?
I would respond similarly to the Commissioner. It's a start, but it is the bare minimum that we have to do in order to maintain and build trust within the community. Building that trust is not going to be an overnight endeavor. It's going to be something that takes time, and it's going to be something that takes constant vigilance. And frankly, while we are looking at our next... At our next police commissioner, yes, that commissioner needs to deal with the public safety and the level of violence that we are seeing in our streets, but that commissioner, man or woman, also has to deal with rebuilding that public trust, that community relation... Relations... Relationship, and be able to sustain that over time. And that's going to be difficult conversations. That's going to be communication and constant communication, and it's not going to be an easy task. But I think it is something that I am prepared to support the commissioner on and look forward to embarking on that task over time.
What are the current demographics of the Police Department by gender or race?
By gender, it's 78% male and 22% female, and by race, I believe it's 51% white male, a 32% African-American male, 12%, 14% Latino, and a small percentage of Asian or other.
And in the testimony, I think, Mr. Abernathy, you provided, you talked about diversity and recruitment hiring. Can you talk about that in more detail, what steps you do for trying to recruit a diverse police force in hiring?
Sure. Our recruitment unit, as well as every individual officer, is responsible for that. We have a group of people who we concentrate on recruitment, and they do career fairs in every opportunity to recruit minority and women, whether it be in military fairs, local fairs. But we have to do a better job, as each individual, convincing folks from Philadelphia, people from our communities, that they want to be part of our team. And all of that has to do with the way we interact with the community on a regular basis. If you saw a cop as a kid and said, "That's what I want to be like," there's a greater likelihood you'd want to do that. So it's a struggle to make sure that we continue. The only group that we are outpacing our population is with Hispanics or Latinos right now. We are... Our classes are... The last probably two years have been about 20% Latino or Latina, and in a population that's below that for the city. So we seem to be holding a pretty good grasp in that community and moving the needle just a little bit in others. I mean, when I came on the department 30 years ago, I think it was 20% female or 18% female, and it continues to grow in a very small number, partly because there's some different challenges for females coming on this job with the shift work and the scheduling. If they're the primary caregiver for children, it doesn't lend itself to coming into this line of work. But the population of Philadelphia is 52% female, so we always know that there are candidates out there. We also know that the population of African-Americans is higher than our representation on the force. So there's a concerted conscious effort working with groups within the Police Department and outside to make sure that we're getting candidates who can qualify for the job, who would be an asset in any community that we had them serve in.
Mr. Abernathy, you talked about in your testimony the review of the city's civil service regulations and whether these regulations place barriers to diversity. And you also talked about some changes to job classifications for the Parks and Recreation Department, as well as improvement to the firefighter examination. Can you discuss some of these, this review process, and how is it... How are they barriers to diversity?
So I'll start with Parks and Recreation, and so we look at a position like assistant rec leader, where... Which historically had been skewing... Had skewed white for years. And I think one of the questions in the commissioner and her due diligence was curious about why that was. We recognize that there were some barriers within the job title and the job classification itself. Those were amended through civil service. I'm happy to provide you copies of both the original classification and the amendments. And we have seen recent recruitment change in order to have a more diverse workforce. On the firefighter exam itself, you know, diversity within the fire department has historically been a challenge. Commissioner Teal has consistently looked at both recruits, as well as the promotional classes, within the department, and wanted to see a test that could more... Would more likely reflect the demographics of Philadelphia. I'm not prepared to go into the details of that test today, but I'm happy to circle back with you and have that conversation.
I have a few more questions for Mr. Abernathy and then Ms. Coulter, because I know some of my colleagues have questions as well. You're currently reviewing the city's social media policy, and you plan on making it stronger. How will you educate the city workforce on some of these changes to the social media policy? And how do you tend to imbalance the employees' rights to free speech versus the public employer's right to limit activity that may impact or disrupt city operations, effectiveness, and in a relationship to the public?
You know, I think that question really comes back to, does an employee's post, or what they say publicly, affect our ability to do our job? If it... If an employee is posting hate speech, if they're posting material that fundamentally challenges our ability to interact with the public, erodes the public trust, then that is a speech that we can't tolerate, and that is speech that we are looking to improve the social media policy. Right now, the policy is... Provides guidelines. We will be providing actionable items, not just creating expectations, but actually understanding that there could be consequences for people's actions. That will have to be socialized through civil service... Or through our unions, clearly, and will also be socialized through each department, through HR training, and likely through a training similar to our sexual harassment training. We have not gotten far enough down the road to understand exactly how it's going to be communicated, but we recognize it's a big shift. It'll be a big change, and if we actually want to make true reform, we're going to have to spend a lot of time understanding how to manage that change.
And you also made reference in your testimony to new technology to assist in monitoring social media accounts. Can you describe this technology?
So there are currently technology, and this is from my layman's understanding, there is currently technology that can monitor Facebook, Instagram, those types of social media accounts for specific types of bad speech. I also understand that much of that technology is flawed and doesn't... Has not been successful when it's been rolled out. There may be some other modules that we can... That we are exploring to figure out exactly what works. I think the Police Department is going through the same process that the city is now, and we're also having conversations, does it make sense to have one central monitoring agency and then have... Insert into a disciplinary process from there? I think this is a complicated issue, but we know we can't move forward with enacting a policy without having some sort of implementation tool or enforcement tool on the backend.
Yeah, because when you made reference to technology, I'm just reflecting on, you know, recent reports that in some of the programming for artificial intelligence, there's also an inherent bias in that type of programming, which can lead to additional flaws and not really provide the information that you're looking for in that regard. You closed your testimony by talking about the search for a new commissioner. You made reference to the organization. I think that was also in today's media reports called the Police Executive Research Forum. What is that organization?
It is a nonprofit based in Washington, DC, that is... Provides thought leadership for police departments across the country. Perf has actually been involved in a number of big-city police chief searches, and most recently in Baltimore, but also was involved in Los Angeles, Houston, Charleston, among a host of other cities.
Okay. And also, to kind of wrap up my question for you, Mr. Abernathy, at the end of your testimony, and also I think in some of the comments that were made earlier, about the search for a new commissioner, you stated there's going to be an online survey process as well as a paper process where people can submit. But will that truly provide an opportunity for the public to weigh in on a new police commissioner, when you're talking about receiving information either through paper or online? And is that going to provide an opportunity for the public to give their perspective? I know it's an internal process that the administration will have, but this is an issue special considering the trust issues that we have. They want to make sure that any new commissioner comes in as someone that can lead the department forward, but also rebuild the trust within the city.
Agreed, and that's exactly why we have launched the survey tool, is to gather some feedback, to make sure that we understand what the public sees as the most important issues facing the Police Department in Philadelphia, to make sure we understand what characteristics the public feels is most important in a commissioner, as well as to allow the public to tell us anything else they think we need to know as we embark on the search. And that information will be used to craft questions that will be asked of the commissioner in the commissioner's search to each candidate.
We have a lot of people. You're good. Thank you, Councilman. We've got a pretty long list today. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon. So I just wanted to start off by saying that often, or over and over again, I heard when there was some sort of action by the Police Department in reference to the Plainview Project, and, you know, what action the Police Department was taking to address it. I kept hearing over and over again, "This is a start. This is a start." And it's very disturbing to me because it comes across as a new revelation to the Police Department, that there are problems within the Police Department. And I would say that for, you know, for the folks who live in the neighborhoods that are most affected by the comments by these officers, this is not a revelation. This is not something new. This is something that's been happening for a very, very long time in the city of Philadelphia. I'm born and raised in this city, in North Philadelphia. I remember things that happened, that I saw happen as a child in this city, and are actions that never should have happened between police and young black men who were much older than me at that time. They, you know, seemed grown. They were probably in their teenage years. But as a child, to see some of the things that have been seen, that we've all witnessed, you know, just very disturbing, that stick with you, that stay with you. So the idea that this is a revelation of some sort, and even in the testimony, is extremely disturbing to me. And, you know, I just had a couple of things that I wanted to say because, you know, as someone who was somewhat targeted by the police... By retired police personnel, who said that, in reference to my fight against stop-and-goes, which breed, in my opinion, addiction, alcohol dependency, these kinds of things. The... When I was in the midst of a fight around this issue, one of the comments that was made was that someone should slap the S out of that B, referring to me. Yeah, okay. But, you know, that's what they said. And my thing is this, you know, as officers, you have my life in your hands. This is something to be taken seriously. You have my life in your hands, and so we need to depend on our Police Department. And I don't want to get it twisted that this is a small segment of the Police Department, but it's a small but very dangerous segment that needs to be properly addressed. And so the idea that, again, that this is some sort of a revelation is quite frightening to me, to the Police Department. I wanted to read a letter that I sent to the mayor, and Commissioner Coulter, you and I discussed this just a few minutes ago, because I did not want to catch you off-guard, but I did want to make you aware that I was going to be reading this letter that I sent to the mayor. And it's really about the T-shirt, the LAPD T-shirt. But it really covers so much more than that. And, you know, when we talk about police and policing in the city of Philadelphia, so much needs to be done, and I do feel that we are in need of a fresh start. And so I'm just going to read excerpts from the letter, if that's okay with you, Mr. President. And it says, it reads, "Dear Mayor Kenny, I am writing this letter with great concern regarding the direction of our Police Department. In short, I do not believe that the acting commissioner, Kristina Coulter, can effectively manage the external relationships necessary to address police and community tensions, which is absolutely required of any commissioner. This belief is rooted in the recently released photo from 1994 of Ms. Coulter wearing a T-shirt which reads, 'LAPD: We Treat You Like a King.' Ms. Coulter's statements on the issue, as per the Philadelphia Inquirer, are as follows: One, she never considered the shirt a reference to the Rodney King incident; Two, she was more interested in the day-to-day street work than the politics of policing; Three, it may have meant something to the people in LA; And Four, the aftermath of King's beating was a very, very dark period for policing that set back police-community relations all over the country." that set back police-community relations all over the country. And she remembered experiencing unrest in Philadelphia after officers involved in the incident were acquitted at trial. Based on Ms. Coulter's contradictory statements regarding this incident, it is my opinion, it is inconceivable that she was unaware that the T-shirt referenced the widely-publicized brutal beating of a citizen by, by officers of the Los Angeles Police Department in 1991. Furthermore, the subsequent trial acquittal and ensuing riots were covered internationally in 1992. Finally, community and police relationships remained stressful in 1994 at the time of the photograph, and many suggested there was an influence of the King trial on other trials and verdicts of that time, most notably the O.J. Simpson murder trial, which again highlighted historic problems between the black community and the Los Angeles Police Department. While Ms. Coulter states that she did not know of the reference, my question is, should she have known? And I believe that the answer is yes, she should have known. As a law enforcement professional who was not new to the force and clearly recalls the impact that the incident had on policing at the time, I believe that Ms. Coulter was knowledgeable of the inference of the statement. Also, her recent statement Also, her recent statement attempting to explain the shirt by stating that she was more interested in the day-to-day street work than the politics of policing is actually troubling and insulting to communities that feel disconnected from and adversarial to the police who serve them. The so-called "politics of policing" matters significantly. The trust, faith, and confidence of our citizens relies on making a selection that will not further divide our communities. Thus, I implore you to ask Ms. Coulter to step down immediately and replace her and replace her through a very public process to ensure transparency. Many concerned citizens are requesting an African-American female be appointed from within the department, or one who has considerable experience with, with the Philadelphia Police Department. This appointment in one of our most important departments with a budget of almost three-quarters of a billion dollars, and it needs a reset. I join with many concerned voices advocating for this change, and ask that you strongly consider their suggestions for the betterment of every community in Philadelphia. I was sent this letter to Mayor Kenny on September 3rd, shortly after the revelation of the T-shirt became public knowledge. As I just mentioned, I did speak with Ms. Coulter just a moment ago about my concerns, and she did offer to speak with us, with members of city council, to further explain herself. And so I look forward to having that conversation, because I would like further explanation as to how this happened. I would like to know, I would like to hear from you. My letter stands, but I would like to hear your version of events. You said that you have been misquoted by the paper. I know something about being misquoted in the paper as well. So I would like to hear your version of, of the events. Thank you, Mr. President.
If I could just comment very quickly. I, I did not say, I did not say that I was misquoted. I said there was a whole lot more to an interview that was not included. So I just want to put on the record that what was said was said, but there was a lot more conversation that didn't make it in this, that I would like to talk about it.
And I would just encourage, in this public setting, that if there's more that didn't make it into the paper, that you now have an opportunity to say those things that did not make it into the paper. So that as a matter of full transparency, that everything is on the table.
Right. I would be, if you indulge, because I know this hearings for something else, I'd be happy to comment more on my feelings behind everything that has gone on in the last three weeks regarding this issue, because my heart has been broken over this. I said, there's folks in this room who I have served in their communities, who know my heart, and know that for 30 years I have served in black and brown communities with all that I ever had to give, never treating people unfairly or unjustly because of their race or even people who I had to arrest, I treated like gentlemen or gentle ladies going through the process. I know that, I should have known, that I, I said that then, I say that now. I did not make that inference. In fact, when the story first came to me, somebody said, there's a picture of you wearing a Rodney King shirt. I said, I never owned a Rodney King shirt. That was my response. It must have been photoshopped, because in my mind, it wasn't what I thought. And when they showed me the picture, I said, that is me, I was wearing that shirt. Never made that, in my mind, that it was a Rodney King shirt. When framed in that reference, absolutely you can see that. And I didn't deny that when I spoke with people in the print media. But I had a three-hour conversation with a reporter where we discussed a whole lot of things regarding that time, and how if I knew then what I knew now, and if I knew that there was any chance that I would be hurting people that I cared about, I wouldn't have wore that shirt. That reporter decided not to do the story. It was picked up by an associate, it became a very condensed, condensed version of everything that we had talked about. But I made it clear then, and I want to make it clear now, that anybody that I hurt because of something that I did, is something that will trouble me forever, because my entire career has been designed to help people. My entire life has been designed to help people. So by making a poor decision, and I claim that and I own that, it was a poor decision to wear that shirt, it was never a conscious decision to hurt somebody by wearing it. And that's what I want to put on the record, that, that was the end result. And that was something that 25 years ago, if we all had a do-over, and I don't think there's anybody here in this room that wouldn't like a do-over on something that they've done. We learn and we grow, as we do as a city and as a department. But I can assure you that at the end of the day, there was never that intention, and I think the folks that know me, and based on the hundreds of people from communities that I served that have contacted me within the last couple of weeks, have all said the same thing, that's not who you are, we're surprised that this is where it is. But I, that's all me, I own wearing the shirt. But I also own that I never intended to hurt anybody by wearing it. It's sad that that's the end result, and I live with that, but that wasn't my intention.
I, I, I know that we have to move on, Mr. President, but I just really want to say one last thing if I could, and that is that I understand that what your intention may have been, and that in your heart, what you may have wanted to do, or how you want people to see you. But in a city of 1.6, 1.5 or 6 million people, you know, everybody doesn't know you. And so they, what they know of you is what they see in terms of your past and your actions of today, and how you handle the Plainview Project and things of that nature. That's, that's how they know you. Folks don't know you personally, folks don't know me personally, but they know me from representing the eighth district and the work that I do. And so if the work that you do is represented by a T-shirt that represented a brutal period for police, or actually one particular incident, because the, the situation continues, police brutality continues up until this very moment in this country. And so if the way that they know you is that way, then I say that it's very problematic. So, but I, but I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman. I hate to do this to the members, but we have quite an extensive list of public individuals who would like to testify, so I'm gonna ask my colleagues to, limited questions of five minutes, if that's okay with you all. All right, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Councilwoman Green posed a question on demographics, and I heard the, the racial demographics, always we like to hear also, what is the percentage of an entity or an organization that has Philadelphia residents as a part of that group? So can you tell us what the percentage of members of the police are Philadelphia residents?
I couldn't tell you how many were born in Philadelphia, but about 28% of the department, I believe, lives outside of the city of Philadelphia. One of the things that Commissioner Ross did, and we continued, was when they put the education policy in effect, that officers had to have 60 degrees, 60 credits towards a bachelor's degree or an associate's degree. What we realized is that there was 75% of the city residents that would not qualify to be police officers. So when we vacated that part of the ruling, we did get more folks from Philadelphia applying for the job. That was something that I don't know that was ever an intended consequence of adding an educational credit, but it certainly affected, for a period of, I believe, five or six years, our ability to hire more people from Philadelphia. That will be a lasting effect, because the folks that were hired then, a lot of them are still employed. But with regards to residency, about 30, I believe, close to 30% don't live in the city, maybe 28. So the other 70%, whether they came from somewhere else or not, are Philadelphia residents today.
Okay. Second question. Discuss briefly, because the clock is ticking, what you mean, and I quote, what you mean by self-monitoring, what does that mean and what does it look like?
Well, it means that we should never again have somebody come to us and give us information regarding things that police officers are doing, that we should be able to access their social media, their public footprint, without having an independent group bringing that to us. Just to go back a little bit on a comment that was made in, nobody thinks that hatred and bias or bigotry is new. What is new is the way that it came to us with regards to the project. It wasn't that we didn't believe for a minute that we have police officers and any other profession that have biases or that will go against any particular group or have hatred. But this was something that was brought to us through a project that was done through social media, and we were really behind the eight ball there. We weren't proactively monitoring it.
Okay, so, so given that, given that reality, what, what tactics? Is there a unit that deals with self-monitoring? Is there a professional on your team that deals with self-monitoring? How's it happen now?
It's part of the discussion we're having right now with the city with regards to both technology
So you're actually trying to frame out what that looks like?
And folks who could do the analytical work on those correct words to be putting in and feeding, to make sure that we're not behind the time on something that could be offensive and we didn't even enter that word. You know what I mean?
And is there a timeframe attached to when you want that to be a tangible new responsibility or duty of someone?
It's, it's something that we want, as soon as we can get the correct information, we had, we had followed up on technology that was used with regards to Facebook and Twitter, but got information back that it wasn't necessarily working at a rate that it should be.
Okay.
Now, when you're doing something like a project, if you don't get it all, it doesn't matter, but it matters to us. We don't want things to be able to slip through. So at the end of the day, we're gonna prob, probably be creating some type of hybrid to use available technology, but also using a human component to make sure that there's not something that's just sliding through and being missed.
And I think to Councilman Green's point, we recognize that the technology in this area is flawed, and, and may be biased in its own right. And so we want to make sure that what we put in place works, is fair, and is accurate. We hope to be able to identify a plan to move forward by this fall.
Okay.
But, and that will also go along with the city's review and rewrite of our social media policy. We would like to, to be able to roll both of those things out at the same time.
My, my only suggestion I, I would offer is, you say that the police department will review its social media policies in consultation with the Anti-Defamation League. I would suggest that you also consider the NAACP and the mirror organization in the Latino community.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you, good afternoon. First, let me say that as a district council person, it became very clear to me very early on in my tenure, the importance and the value between police and community relations. And the fact that the majority of the work around public safety is, is necessary from the community perspective, right? Public safety and achieving an increased public safety means that there is trust in a process. And every time we have one of these incidents, I feel like we go back so many steps. And as someone who works every day with my commanding officers, because I understand that my job is, is to ensure folks that there, there is trust in the process. And in the, under the last administration, when Ramsey came in from outside, and people criticized Mayor Nutter for it, one of the first things that Ramsey did was ask the Justice Department to come in. That Justice Department produced a rapport, and later there was a police oversight board that was created. I served on that board with Councilwoman Heenan, I think Councilwoman Curtis Jones as Chair of Public Safety, and this administration chose to dismantle it. And when they did so, and Brian, you and I had the conversation, I was very concerned because for the first time, I was sitting in a table with civil rights attorneys, community residents, and we had very tenseful conversations at that table. We spent hours at the Training Academy talking about use of force, de-escalation, rules and regulations. So my question is, what has happened to the report and the work that was being done? And what, if anything, was missing that has kind of amplified what we're facing today?
With the recommendations made from the Department of Justice, I believe there was 91 actionable items. I think we're somewhere about 95% incomplete, and then we continue to monitor them. We have Staff Inspector Jackie Bailey-Davis, who continues to go down the things that we can still make some movement on. But we adopted just about all of the recommendations. There was a couple that inherently, like, something like that an officer had to go through CIT training before they got a taser. We believed that this department at that time, that that was necessary, even though the report said, recommended decoupling it. So it was something that we discussed, we seriously considered, and then we said that we feel that our practice was the best practice at that time. It's something we continue to review when we look at police-involved shootings, to say that if it could have ended differently, maybe it would have. But for the most part, we not only adhere to what the Department of Justice said, but we continue to monitor it to make sure that we still have in place some of those things. A couple of the things that they had requested were things that regard Act 111 negotiations. So there'll be things that we will be asking for. Since the DOJ report became actionable, we haven't had a contract hearing where any of that stuff was discussed. But the recommendations, for the most part, because it was, as those of you recall, collaborative reform, that we entered into it willingly and sat down at the table and had countless discussions with those people making the recommendations, because it's not a cookie cutter. One size don't fit all. Philadelphia is different than Chicago, and it's different than New York, and you had to really look at what the best practices were here. But we have not abandoned the premise of that report or those recommendations. Chief Warner, who runs our training bureaus here today, a lot of the things affected our training and how we do things, and those things are not still just in place, but have been enhanced over time to make sure that things like reality-based training is part of not just recruit curriculum, but in-service training, and that it's used to make sure that our officers are better prepared to make good decisions.
Some, some of the issues were related to staffing and arbitration, right? In light of what's going on around public accountability, and maybe this question is for our managing director, what, what if anything are we looking to do differently as we go into this contract negotiations to win back public trust around accountability?
There, we'll have a number of, of requests within the contract negotiations around public trust, accountability. I'm not prepared to negotiate in public today, but happy to have that conversation with you offline.
Okay. Well, I think it's important, again, when we set ourselves back, then we have to give more, you know, we constantly are talking about what does restitution look like. I think we're at a state where we have to be more public and more transparent about this than we've ever had to be.
Councilman, and, and I appreciate that, and I agree with you. We are still three months away before presenting those guidelines to, to the FOP. We're just not prepared to do it today.
So I would say
But I agree.
This is, and this is for the good officers, right? I have friends of mine who are officers. I have friends of mine who are officers. The folks who do this and take this job very seriously deserve that. They deserve that public accountability and transparency so that we can work on this. And lastly, because I only have one other question, there were two things that I want to highlight, and if you can respond to this. We allowed 11 officers to resign prior to being dismissed. Does that mean we never hold them accountable?
Well, Councilwoman, the reason that I believe they all resigned was because of the investigation that was done. We have civil service regulations, and in this country, we can't make anybody hold a job that they no longer wish to hold. So they were given 30 days with intent to dismiss, and they made a decision that they were going to resign. The advantage of resigning is the arbitration process is not available for them. By resigning, they will never be a police officer again. If they don't resign and they're fired, they have every opportunity to try to seek getting their job back. So they made a decision within the guidelines of civil service, and there's nothing we could do to, we couldn't do it to anybody here in this room if they decided to leave their job.
And I just want to, again, that becomes an issue.
Councilwoman, hold on a second. Folks, we please ask you all to not, if you want to testify, please get on the list and be able to say what you have to say. So disrespect the witness and the people asking the questions. Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess that becomes one of the issues, again, as we do contract negotiations and moving forward, is the ability of people to just take a pass and not be held accountable is what frustrates people and the public, because essentially, they're going to get full pensions, full everything. There wasn't a due process for them, but there wasn't a due process for the public either. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Councilor President. And I want to also thank Councilman Derek Green for organizing and hosting this hearing. Just a couple of statements regarding this particular issue. I do also want to be supportive of some of the comments regarding Commissioner Coulter and the recent controversy regarding the T-shirt, only for the simple fact that I know officers, and just being a young man growing up in the streets of South Philadelphia, I know officers are trained to be very acute when it comes to observation to detail. And so when I saw the response, you know, I was a little concerned, just for the simple fact that I've known you from working around here for several years, consider you to be an intelligent individual, and so when I saw the response that you didn't really know that the shirt referenced the actual beating, you know, I immediately took it somewhat as an insult to my intelligence, because I know that you're a smart person. But in listening to your statement, I know you talked about taking responsibility for actually putting the shirt on and the choice to put the shirt on. And so I just wanted to put that out there, just for the record, because it was something that I was discussing with my staff, and it was very, very concerning. I work with the Philadelphia Police Department on a day-to-day basis. I'm at a funeral each month regarding addressing homicides here in the city of Philadelphia, and I know in order for us to reduce the level of homicides here in this city, there has to be a strong relationship and trust between the Philadelphia Police Department, most importantly, the public. And so, and moving forward, can you give us an update on, one, what is the current homicide clearance rate is here in the city of Philadelphia? Two, has there been other incidents that have been reported to the Office of Internal Affairs regarding acts of hate and racial bias within the Philadelphia Police Department? And also, out of the 72 officers that were fired, out of 72 officers, 15 were fired. With the remaining 57 officers, what were the type of actions of discipline that they received? And also, which ones are now back out on the street?
Some of those officers received a 30-day suspension. The majority of them are still going through the disciplinary process that they were charged with offense, but they have not had their police board of inquiry hearing yet. The clearance rate for homicide is about 52%. And I don't believe that there are any instances, certainly none that I know of, that have not been reported to Internal Affairs. This investigation regarding social media was not the only time police officers have been disciplined regarding violation of the social media policy. This is obviously a large-scale investigation that was brought all at once, but there were officers since the inception of our policy who have faced discipline for violating that policy, whether it was something that was hatred, whether it was something that was an inappropriate comment. The policy has been in use, and the disciplinary code has been in use since the policy existed.
All right, I want to take a deeper dive. So separate from the social media issue regarding racial biases and police officers putting up different type of racial comments, let's talk about the department as a whole and reports, right, from other officers to their superiors regarding specifics, acts of racial biases, acts of hatred within the Philadelphia Police Department. There has to be some type of statistics regarding officers and how they are treated and personnel within the Philadelphia Police Department around the issue of acts of racial bias or incidents.
Hey, I have Deputy Commissioner Wimbley from the Officer of Professional Responsibility, who can handle a little more as to the frequency and the place the complaints are always presented.
Good afternoon. So if I understand your question?
Excuse me. Just state your name for the record.
Robin Wimbley, Deputy Commissioner of OPR.
Thank you.
If I understand your question correctly, you're questioning officers making other complaints about officers?
Or the culture within the Philadelphia Police Department around the issue of race.
Okay, so obviously, we do have a problem with the culture, because if you look at the Plainview Project, you can see there's a problem. So.
I'm looking for documentation of these types of incidents within the Philadelphia Police Department.
Okay, we have, we have an ability for the officers to make complaints. Officers do make complaints about supervisors. Not many officers make complaints about other officers that come through Internal Affairs. So those type of complaints are probably made to their immediate supervisors, that they're having a problem with someone. One of the things that we're trying to do in light of this whole situation, we realize that we have officers who violated policy and posted very negative things, working side by side with officers that they've offended. So what we have begun to do is have healing forums, where these officers come together. We've done Southwest Division and Northwest Division, where officers were asked to come together, and we had open dialogue. We had, go ahead.
Okay, so I want to make sure I'm asking my question correctly and clearly.
Okay.
Is there documentation in the Office of Internal Affairs specifically around the issue of racial incidents within the Philadelphia Police Department? Let me give you an example.
Okay.
In the 17th Police District, someone, and it's inconclusive, the findings to date, but someone had wrote some racial epithets inside the bathroom stall, right?
Yes.
Okay. Are there other incidents that have been reported to the Office of Internal Affairs throughout the Philadelphia Police Department as a whole, specifically regarding racial incidents? It could be including personnel, it could be including coming into the locker room and maybe seeing a nuisance inside the locker, any of those type of incidents, just in general, that have been reported to Internal Affairs?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have, can you provide to our committee the actual documentation and statistics?
I don't have any statistics on it, but I can get it for you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Commissioner. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Council President. So one of the things I want to highlight before we get started is that this is so much more than just about social media postings, I think that was hinted at before, but it's about what's deeply reflected in other practices that have denied black, brown, immigrant, religious, and women, you know, their right to a sense of public safety. And actually, in fact, the scale and frequency at which, you know, the postings members have posted on social media is, to some extent, a large indication about the comfort and ease in which they feel a sense of impunity about saying things that shock the public conscience, that would never happen. I mean, of course, you're responding, because the Plainview Project was so public. But it begs to raise questions about a culture of impunity that seems to be in play when there are actions that are far less public. And, you know, that this is not just about individual actions, it's about institutional culture fundamentally. And to be clear, that this level of discriminatory conduct is not only impacting just communities outside of the police department, it's actually impacting police officers themselves. It's your own force that's happening. So in 2017, when Guardian Civic League pushes forward on the civil rights lawsuit about racism against black police officers within the narcotics unit, I've been sickened and heartbroken to read about female police officers and the amount of sexual harassment that they experience and abuse at the hands of their own colleagues. So if the public complains that they were treated poorly, and if a police officer complains that they were treated poorly, we have to have a completely different process, period. Like, it's just not working the way that it's happening. And so, you know, I, you know, in the interest of time, I'd like to have some very quick questions to the Commissioner. There's lots of other issues that I'm not going to get into right now, but, and I think my colleagues touch upon really well. But one of them is, there's a police board of inquiry that covers disciplinary hearings, right? Disciplinary behaviors. Could you tell the public when the next hearing will be by the PBI?
There's a hearing every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of every week.
Are they open to the public?
If they're not an internal, they are. If they're an internal, they're not. And the internals, just to give a little explanation, if an officer brings forth a complaint against something that they have seen or something that comes by way of not a public complaint, but an officer coming forward with a complaint, those hearings are private, because we obviously want to protect the identity of the complaining officer. And if it was open to the public, it would be easy to identify who was next to you that day that may have revealed this information, and we never want to discourage officers from bringing.
How would the public know if the next hearing is public or private?
I guess they would have to call on a daily basis, because they're scheduled a month in advance. But we would have, if they were the first three days, you know, I mean, it's just whatever one comes next on the calendar.
It's not available, like, it's not posted on the.
No, it's not.
Website or anything like that.
And quite often, cases get changed or settled prior to going on as well. If somebody say they're offered, what they did was a police vehicle accident, something that's not very major to us, but not something that most public would want to come and sit in on if cop backed into a pole. A lot of times, they're offered a deal like that to reprimand a five. So if they're offered two days and accept it, there's no hearing that goes on, it's just resolved, and then.
So to be clear, the police board of inquiry governs police disciplinary behaviors. It meets every Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday once a month?
And Thursday. No, every day. It meets four days a week, four weeks a month. The only day it doesn't meet is Friday, and that's when the department advocate is prepping for his next week's cases. So it meets four days a week, all four weeks of the month.
And is there a next hearing on this particular topic?
There will be, there'll be plenty of officers that will, moving forward in the Plainview, that have not pled guilty, that will have their hearings. So they may be several in a day, because there should be shortened duration. Like, it doesn't require a lot of witnesses. It requires the post and the investigator from Internal Affairs will come in and present their case. The department advocate will present on behalf of the department, and then the officer who has representation can decide whether to put on a defense or let it go from that point.
I'd like to be able to follow up with you on that, in order to let, you know, the public should know, if there's an opportunity to see a board in action that is governing disciplinary behaviors, there should, and if it's available or made open to the public, it should be available for the, you know, the public should be able to know so that some of these things can be observed, so we understand a little bit better about how your own internal processes are working.
And we would welcome that on any case that wasn't an internal. I just have to be very honest with you, the room that the police board of inquiry is in is very, very small, because we're still in police headquarters, so the opportunity to fill lots of people doesn't exist. But, you know, we could have a sampling of people who can view it, and it's obviously our plan at our new headquarters to have more space that would allow folks to, you know, be able to enter the room.
So, Mr. Abernathy, I don't expect you to negotiate the upcoming police contract in public, but I think what my colleague, Councilwoman Kiyo Sanchez, was hinting at, and what I think the public really deserves, is to understand what the goals are for the upcoming contract, in particular about what the city is trying to do to improve and ensure the integrity of internal investigations when it comes to public complaints, or, rather, and when it comes to internal complaints about discrimination by police officers themselves, so both from the public and the police officers. So could you talk a little bit about what your goals are for the contract? You don't have to discuss the exact specifics of it, but there should be some sense of goals that I think the public should be entitled to hear at this stage.
Thanks, Councilwoman. I appreciate that, and I would agree. I think we are interested in exploring the disciplinary process and making it, and as well as disciplinary arbitration as we go forward. I think we have certainly heard the public and their frustrations around the police department's disciplinary process. That will be something that we will, that we will be exploring in this contract. We'll also be exploring other things that we think are management rights to allow the next commissioner the ability to manage more appropriately. But I think the ultimate goal is to make sure that this department, going forward, has the ability to rebuild the community trust without restraint. I think we recognize that there are a host of challenges that are often self-inflicted between the police department and the community. Frankly, the contract limits our ability to address some of those things, and our hope and our goal is to enter into a new contract that allows us to kind of bridge, to bridge the gaps and move us actually into a beneficial relationship with our neighborhoods. I'm not naive enough to think that the list that we're going to present to the FOP, we're going to get 100% of it, but I think we are optimistic that we'll be able to move the ball forward.
I mean, one of the things I hope is that these things are.
The bell rang a little while ago.
I'll just finish out this.
Can you come back?
Can I just finish out this, just closing this out? I mean, one of the things that I hope that this is done clearly is about making sure that there's, you know, that there's a public role to be played. And I certainly hope that people in this room that have brought us to this space, as heartbreaking and enraging and angering as it may be, that there's an opportunity for the folks in this room to also set some of the priorities around what the next contract is going to be. I do want to point out that in the city surveys that are going out, there's nothing really about, that the public can weigh in on about culture, accountability, and discipline. And so that's a big problem in terms of the surveys that the city is putting out, because that's clearly one of the focuses of this particular one. And I had two other questions that I'd like to come back to at some later point.
Can you come back? Thank you. Because we do, we have a lot of people that came down who don't get an opportunity to speak in council chambers, and I really would like to, as best possible, get to them. So that's why normally I try to, you know. So I don't hate, you know, you know, kind of monitoring my colleagues' speech, but we do want to get these people in and have an opportunity to speak today. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon to each of you. If you will, I want you to go back and help me when you were responding to Council Reynolds Brown's question about the residency of Philadelphia police officers. Did I hear you say 70% of Philadelphia police officers are residents of the city of Philadelphia?
That's correct.
Help me and just take me quickly through history. When were Philadelphia police officers allowed to live outside of Philadelphia?
I believe it was about eight years ago.
And eight, and just for the record, because I, you know, I just got back. I was gone for a little while. So what administration was that negotiated through collective bargaining? What happened there?
It was a result of collective bargaining. It would have been somewhere in the Nutter administration, but I'm not sure.
So it was under Mayor Nutter's administration, the police department via collective bargaining received the authority to live outside of the city of Philadelphia?
Yes.
Okay.
And just for the record, Councilwoman. And, and just for the record, Councilwoman, um, we will be asking for residency changes in this contract.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
We will be asking, we will be asking to, for residency changes in this contract.
Okay. [applause] In, in addition to that, um, Commissioner, when you were responding to questions about recruitment, I, I heard you mention, and it's very much like the school district, that relative to recruitment, you rely on all members of the Philadelphia Police Department to assist you in recruitment. And, and I understand that process as, as a whole. I want to ask you, has the department ever established any standard operating procedures that strategically take you to the 102 historically black colleges and universities that we have across the United States? And they aren't necessarily all Philadelphia residents, but it is where we can go to meet criminal justice majors who are not adverse to working in law enforcement. So have we ever done that, and do we have that in existence now? Not as a, just sort of, it's something we will decide to do, but is that standard operating procedure within the department?
Um, I, I will look at the frequency and the scheduling for that. I know that they have gone to Cheney, they've gone to universities where, historically, black universities where we're looking to recruit. We also go, um, to minority fairs where we're looking to, knowing that folks, especially criminal justice ones, I believe they had one recently at Gerard College.
Let me, so, so let me, let me, let me say, I think that's a really good start. I mean, my colleagues in our community-based organizations across the city, we host college vocational fairs, recruitment events, but I am talking about establishing a standard operating procedure to be very intentional about trying to recruit those who are studying in the field of criminal justice right now, who are not adverse to law enforcement. So I would recommend that the department develop some sort of a policy in order to do that. Finally, um, I was happy when the department did away with that 60 credit requirement. I was one of the people publicly during the budget process said, "We should get rid of it because it excludes people who haven't had the opportunity to gain access to that educational opportunity." With that being said, what are the requirements to become a police officer in the city of Philadelphia? And I'm really concerned about the psychological evaluation piece. Talk to me about that.
Thanks. Um, the, the requirement is that somebody must be at least 22 years of age, 22. Um, that was changed when we changed the educational requirement to say that we wanted folks to have some life experience. If they didn't go to college, we wanted to be able to gauge a work record, a history, something that demonstrates, because it's an awful lot of power and responsibility to give somebody who just walked out of high school. So we wanted to have that baseline. Um, the process itself requires folks to come, we don't have a test anymore to join the police department. We found that we exhaust everybody that comes through and goes through the process. So there was no need to have a testing that would exclude people from the beginning. The first level of testing, which is required by the state, is the Nelson Denny test, where people are required to read at the ninth-grade level. Um, after they pass, successfully pass that, they go into the PT test, also required by the state, where they have to do a run, they have to do sit-ups, they have to do a deadlift, um, and they have to do a sprint. They have to be able to do that within the required time that the state allows for the age group that they're in. It's all done age-appropriate. If they successfully pass that, they go into the background process, where they are interviewed by a background investigator. Everything that they have done in their life has to be recorded. Some things are things that are still acceptable to then become a police officer. Some things, decisions that people made that I can't discuss publicly, would be a lifetime ban. But, um, obviously, speaking about those particular things would have somebody then have the opportunity to falsify what they could or couldn't do. If they successfully get through the background, or it looks like they're going to, they get set up for a medical appointment, where they go to the medical dispensary. They get, make sure that their health is good because it is a strenuous job. There's some things that folks would have to do. If the doctor passes them, their next level is they go to a polygraph. Our polygraph examiners will ask them a series of questions. They will then pass or fail. The polygraph is used as an investigative tool. If they don't pass, it doesn't mean they're eliminated. It means that their investigator will do more follow-up in the area that deception was shown. Sometimes we find out, especially with some of our young folks, that it's just nerves. It turns out that they never did anything that they were, um, looked at as being deceptive, and you, you had an explanation for it. The final stage prior to the background investigator determining whether that person meets the criteria or not is a psychological test. That is an area that is contracted out. None of us have the expertise to determine...
Now, 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 you got exactly where I wanted to go. In a school district, we talk about this issue called cultural competency. And if the city of Philadelphia contracts out that portion of the psychological evaluation, my question is, um, do we make diversity and inclusion relative to the firms that even compete to actually gain access to the opportunity to perform the psych evaluations?
Councilwoman, we certainly try. We meet with our head psychologist. We are always, our trouble is even getting enough psychologists to do the job, even outside of diversity, because most of them are employed in a full-time job somewhere, and then they contract with us to do this additional work. A lot of them work for the state police. They work in other areas that involve policing, and even suggested to us that we change our testing to model more people who are seeking a profession in law enforcement. The MMPI, which is the standard test that was given, was given to anybody, but police officers have, you want to have a different level of understanding of somebody's psychological competencies.
Well, just let me just state for the record, I want to publicly, relative to the HBCUs and making it a standard operating procedure to recruit there, but also on those who, um, where we promote them getting access to the opportunity to be the professionals who actually provide the psych evaluations. From a cultural competency perspective, I think we should be very intentional about ensuring that those individuals who even compete, that they look like the city of Philadelphia, and I think that would be very helpful to us. I know my depellers well, so thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, any other questions from members of the committee for these witnesses, because we have another second panel? Any other question? Well, thank you very much. Councilwoman?
One question.
Sure.
So I have one, uh, very quick question, because I think it's an important one. Um, Mr. Abernathy, are you planning to restore the full text of complaints to the online database? This was an important executive order that the mayor had put forward to allow for complaints to be fully, uh, out there, to give some level of detail about what's happening with police officers when they are made public. And then, in the last implementation of it, there was a decision to reduce it to a small amount of summaries that we felt one, probably misled the public about what actually happened in terms of the exchange between an officer and the complainant and a member of the public, and then two, just isn't in the spirit of transparency of the executive order. So would, is the, is the administration willing to publish the, a more appropriate summary of an actual complaint made by a member of public on the online database that the city was offering as, as an, uh, as a gesture towards transparency on these types of issues?
Uh, during the next, uh, during the next release of the CAP database, the Complaints Against Police database, uh, there will be additional changes that will provide a additional level of detail, uh, to, to your point. Uh, there was never an intent to, uh, to limit the transparency of that database. We were trying to make it easier to use. Um, and again, we're, you know, we're in a constant state of learning and understanding, and we're, we're going to make adjustments when we make mistakes. And then, and I think that's, that's where, where we're headed.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, that concludes our questions for this panel. I may ask you all to kind of hang around a little bit in the event there's some other inquiries, if it's okay. I know you have pressing issues. Um, this time we bring up the second panel. I'd like to have Hans Minos, Executive Director of Philadelphia Police Advisory Commission, and Ms. Keira Bradford-Grey, uh, who's the chief defender of the Defender Association of Philadelphia.
Do you want to just go first?
Um, do it here.
I think you'll go first.
Okay.
Focus on the place that I was finishing.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Uh, good afternoon. Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Good afternoon, counsel. My name is Keira Bradford-Grey, and I am the Executive Director of the Defender Association of Philadelphia. Um, first, I want to thank this council panel for allowing me to speak today. Um, as I sat here and listened to a lot of the information that was being put forward, I myself am a director of an organization that provides an important service to the public. And I am constantly reminded every day as to how important it is to build trust in the communities that you serve. So as I go through this, I was thinking about a phrase that has been taught to me over and over again as I discharge my duties, and that is, "Culture each strategy for breakfast." If you have strategies and policies that are in place, but you do not change the culture, nothing will change. And if you are an effective leader, you have to seriously and courageously assess the culture, and you have to hold people accountable for the things that erode the public trust. As a Defender Association, we see every day the lack of accountability that leads to the type of behaviors that we have seen and been talking about for not just today and not just the past few months, but for decades. And so these are the things that we really honestly have to assess and honestly have to deal with. And a leader who is going to do that, not only has to have the courage, but also has to have the backing of the public as well as the council when they are willing to make the decision, the tough decisions that they have to make. I also want to say this as an employer, and I will remind people, and I've heard a lot about what they want in the next acting commissioner. And I will caution us, and this may not be popular to say, that if we just want a person that is an African-American, we will erode the trust and faith in them, that they are the right person for the job, for the level of experience and information they have to offer. I would encourage anyone to look at that job description and write in there some cultural aspects of a candidate that you'd like. And if that lends itself to a person of color, then that's, there it is. But you want anyone that's going to be into this, in this position, to ensure that they not only have the right things, but they are the right person for the job. I know this personally. And so, as we talk about who is the next acting commissioner, and trust me, I'm a citizen in this city as well. Not only am I a person that understands what's happening, but I am a citizen in this city. It is someone, and I know, everyone that's my race doesn't have the same experience and the same awareness of what needs to happen here. And I've seen that as personally. But when we put in there the cultural inexperience and the level of urgency that we want someone to understand coming into this position, it will lend ourselves to the right candidate.
Thank you. Um, you have, you have written testimony in addition to your opening statements?
Yes, I do.
If you can kind of summarize, kind of summarize, yeah.
All right. And I will, I will do, I will do my best. And I want to make sure that the things that we know internally that are coming out, that people understand. I'll, I'll do my best. Um, one of the things that our office has is a police advi, police accountability unit that is laser-focused on the issues and the actions of police, that not only erode community policing, but also invade our sense of fairness and justice in the system, that lead people to wrongful convictions that relegate them to a life of second-class citizenship. So we can't disassociate those two things with corrupt policing and the behaviors that we are seeing and the racial bias that, that permeates this system and structures. Um, the Plainview project exposed what is the latest evidence of culture and corruption and prejudice that is all too common in the Philadelphia Police Department. While the issues in leadership among supervisors may make the most headlines, our experience that the defenders show us, it permeates down through the supervisors and the rank-and-file that affects the way people are represented every day. Some in Philadelphia in police leadership today believe that there is no stop and frisk problem. They think that if the number of stops are going down, it's okay. The numbers tell us more blacks are frisked, yet are less likely to be found with drugs or weapons. The numbers that we see tell us that. We look at it in a granular level. The numbers also tell us that neighborhoods of color are policed fundamentally differently than the identical majority white neighborhoods. These are beliefs that we hold, but we actually have the numbers to back it up. At least keep in mind that this doesn't include the fact that the number of vehicle stops are actually increasing in number since the stop and frisk data has been made available. But we haven't focused our energies and attention on that. I not only know this professionally, but I know it personally. My husband is a judge in the Philadelphia Court of Common Pleas. Last November, my husband was pulled over by a Philadelphia police officer, and they told him he was pulled over because his two headlights were out. My husband got out the vehicle and looked at his car with his headlights on, both working, and said, "Those two working headlights are out." The officer then proceeded to check his vehicle. My husband did not tell them he was a judge in the Philadelphia Court of Common Pleas. He allowed them to do so. Afterwards, he informed the, the officers that he was a judge in the Philadelphia Court of Common Pleas, to which the officers did not believe him because of the way he was dressed. Timberlands, sweats, jacket, baseball cap. The officer then proceeded to follow him to our household, and when they saw him pull in our driveway, they left. So if he, as a staunch professional in this city, can experience that, imagine the things that people in low-income neighborhoods are feeling. At the Defender, and I'll, I'll, I'll be, I'll try to be as brief as I can with some numbers. At the Defender Office, we are not only looking at data that show us an understanding of what's happening in police off, policing. We have two people that are highly intelligent, highly trained, and looking at how to piece all these things together. And we get video, complaints, disciplinary actions, that really allow us to understand what's happening on a granular level. At the Defender Association, we are seeing video evidence that the drop-in pedestrian stops is being manipulated by the police department. The number of stops is solely based on the number of people the police department officially document. If people are not documented by the police during a stop for purposes of the federal lawsuit, those people were never stopped. The Defender is seeing people stopped and searched, but not documented for stop and frisk purposes. We have videos of delis, of people, and I'm talking about neighborhood delis, of people being searched and not documented. In the 27th, second district, the same district where that unfortunate tragedy of Maurice Hill happened, and I, I do credit the police department for being brave and professional in that incident. But in that district, we have videos of groups of officers coming back and forth to, to the neighborhood delis, jumping out, searching people, leaving, coming back, and doing it over and over again. So when we talk about the problems, we're trying to get the, the community to cooperate with solving crimes, this is some of the issues that lead to us not being able to clear some of the violence in our city. We have videos of a police sergeant leading groups of cadets out of a van and searching everyone standing outside. And then when we get the police report, the arresting officer testifies that these officers were on bikes, and they witnessed everything that occurred that justified the stops. The harassment is real, but the discipline is not, like the recruits cheating on the open book exam. The police department is playing to the test, whether it's the Bailey parameters, and the Bailey is the federal lawsuit that governs stop and frisk, which can be manipulated if they just don't document it and stop, to the courts where officers consistently fail to turn on their body-worn cameras properly because they know without the video is still their word versus our clients. I am not optimistic in some of the police department's ability to discipline itself. The only reason we know the Narcotics Bureau leadership ordered the entire unit to fabricate paperwork is because a group of officers filed a federal lawsuit after fleeing the police department, fail, feeling the police department failed to adequately investigate. From 2013 to 2018, only 2% of civilian sustained complaints resulted in a guilty finding. And that's before an aggrieved police department officer has an opportunity to go to their own internal labor relations board, made up of other officers with a grievance. That's before the aggrieved officer has the opportunity to file another grievance at the arbitration level. According to the records given to us by the city, and the, the police department has never demoted an officer in the last 10 years. This is a historic moment. The city has a chance to break the cycle of mistrust that has exercised, existed for decades. I want to thank city council and the mayor's office for giving us the resources necessary to monitor this information. I want to thank the mayor, and I have to give credit where credit is due. Without him, we would not have the data to really look at these things and bring it to light. And we've been able to give him information that is really pertinent to underscore some of the things that people are feeling in the city. The city council and the mayor need to create more of a culture of accountability, because this does not go away. Um, the takeaway is, don't get caught. Over 300 officers never thought they would. That is a culture problem. And honestly, does anyone think that these are the only officers posting offensive things on, online? To create a culture of accountability, the disciplinary process needs to be not only taken seriously... taken seriously by the police department, but also needs to be overseen by the community. And that's through the Police Advisory Commission. The entire accountability process needs to be transparent and easily accessible. It's the only way to build trust with the community. If you build trust with the community and the officer feel more accepted, maybe we create an environment where the police department isn't trying to game the stop-and-frisk numbers, but they are truly willing to embrace the understanding that people in certain communities, although they may have some high crimes, need dignity. And the only way you're going to survive dealing with the rampant issue of violence is to work with the communities, not destroy their trust. Thank you very much for allowing me to testify.
I want to thank you, our chief public defender, Ms. Keira Bradford-Grey. Mr. Manos, if you could also summarize your testimony so we can hear from the public that are here today.
Yes. Thank you for having me here today. Again, my name is Hans Manos. I'm the Executive Director of the Police Advisory Commission. So thank you again for inviting me to testify before this committee as a whole regarding the Plainview Project database. As you're aware, the Plainview Project highlighted posts made in five U.S. cities. Philadelphia police were included in that search, and the database included posts made by over 320 active police officers. Many of those posts were exposed as racist, sexist, Islamophobic, and violent. As the PAC highlighted in our review of the Starbucks arrests in 2018, it is imperative that we work to actively undo racism and to be proactive to address its symptoms. As we have also noted, racism is a societal issue. Therefore, it exists in all departments and agencies, including the police department. Despite this reality, police officers should be held to a higher standard, as they are government employees who are authorized to take away life and/or liberty as they deem necessary. The PAC respects the difficult and burdensome tasks that the police department leadership has undertaken to respond to these posts. We're hopeful that the PPD will appropriately punish the officers involved, but more than discipline is needed here. The PPD must introspectively and reflectively assess how the PPD leadership can prevent the perpetuation of racism in the department. To accomplish this, the PPD must move beyond a focus on attitudes or mindsets and focus on measurement, policy, and behaviors. Unless the PPD moves towards a review of its own policies, practices, and, yes, culture, which contribute to the displays of racism, they will forever conclude that they are powerless when officers act on their bias. I'll summarize the PAC response if I can. As City Council is aware, the response from Philadelphia residents was swift. Coalitions immediately formed and reacted with protests and calls for action. I applaud these coalitions for working together to organize and offer specific demands to city leadership. To many communities, the Plainview Project database only served to validate their longstanding belief that police are racist and will not protect or serve them. To others, this is actually a shocking display of bigotry by those who were entrusted with tremendous power over city residents. And of course, to a small group of people that insisted that, despite the large number of officers implicated, these were a few bad apples and not representative of the police department. I will say to those people, can we imagine if a large automaker created 6,500 vehicles and then told us about 320 of them were highly problematic and could maim or harm somebody? How would we react? Would we say that there was just a small number of vehicles that were potentially going to harm us? Despite that, from the PAC's perspective, the diverging conceptualizations of the Plainview Project are problematic, as no effort has been made to assess which assumption, if any, were correct. As a result, the PAC created a project plan to respond to the diverging perspectives and to the larger question of culture within the police department. The project we propose will be collaborative initiative, a collaborative initiative which requires that a contractor work with the PAC, the police department, and other non-governmental organizations, government stakeholders, activists, and local scholars. The goal will be to co-author a report in response to the now infamous Facebook posts uncovered by the Plainview Project. The primary questions that this project will attempt to answer concern PPD culture and PPD operations. Some specific questions I'll highlight now, and they include: To what extent do the problems noted in these posts represent institutionalized racism within the PPD culture? If such a culture of institutionalized racism does exist, how can we proactively address it, how can we proactively address it by PPD leadership? What operational or institutional failures created the environment for the scandal to occur as it did? Is the leadership of the PPD treating this as a material problem for the organization or as a problem that concerns only the officer responsible for the post? The emphasis of this requested project will require substantial analysis guided by these questions, as well as recommendations for formal and informal policy change. However, this must be accomplished via collaborative process during which problems and possible solutions are discussed and memorialized in a final, written, and ultimately public report. If there are diverging opinions or consensus cannot be reached on a topic, the differing viewpoints will all be presented in the report in the spirit of agreeing to disagree. I say this because there is value in presenting all sides of a controversial topic to the public in a transparent way. The PAC has actively been working with members of the Managing Director's Office and the Law Department to create an RFP for this project. In order to fully assess something as nebulous as culture, the PAC will need significant access. A sample of this access includes copies of all EEO complaints and investigations between January 1, 2009, and June 7, 2019; copies of all internal complaints from January 1, 2009, to June 2019; copies of all personnel records and disciplinary records of any other records the PPD will be using to making their, regarding discipline for the involved officers; a list of PPD staff, including their current assignments, and access to body-worn camera footage that currently exists. There should be about 75 to 100 days available at any time. We will also need access to comp stat meetings, access to observe the police academy, interviews of police officers of all ranks, interviews of non-government organizations who partner with the police, interviews with community members citywide, and interviews with clergy, especially Black Herd clergy that represent Muslim and Christian religions. I'll also quickly, I know I'm over time here, highlight that we're preparing to audit the PPD investigation. Deputy Colter gave, sorry, Commissioner Colter gave you an update of where we are on the investigation. That is more information than I've received to date, but regardless, the police department has indicated that this investigation is considered an internal. As the Commissioner referenced to you, internals, as opposed to complaints against police, are not open to the public review or scrutiny. The PAC has been working with the police department to allow our staff to review internal investigations. However, when we are allowed access to internal investigations, we're only allowed to view them in the Internal Affairs Office located in northeast Philadelphia. This makes the review of any cases extremely burdensome. However, if we're required to review the Facebook investigation in this manner, we will be seriously limited in what we can accomplish. Moreover, given the gravity of this incident and the fact that the primary complainant and the primary investigative tool were both driven by civilians, it's unclear what justification, if any, the police department has in classifying this matter as an internal. We have formally voiced our concerns to the Police Commissioner on August 27 and expect to reply within the next 30 days. The PAC has also requested a status update on the investigation, and are awaiting response from the PPD on that request. If we're given complete access to the investigation, we intend to review the PPD's decision-making regarding discipline for each officer. The purpose of the PAC's detailed review is to interpret the posts from a civilian perspective. To prepare for this, we are undertaking an exhaustive review of the Plainview data. In closing, police officers are an integral part of our city. Every day, we empower them to make decisions which can deeply impact the lives of Philadelphians. In order to do this, residents must view police as legitimate. The posts made by the police officers have dealt a significant blow to that legitimacy. Our goal is to identify what issues, if any, might exist in order to help build trust and legitimacy. Moreover, we believe that the mindsets highlighted by these posts can be connected to a measurable and therefore solvable problems. We are anxious to work with the police, the community, and other interested parties to unravel these issues before us and come up with a plan. The PAC thanks City Council, Mayor Kenny, the Managing Director's Office, and our partners in the community in supporting us as we work towards this goal for the betterment of city Philadelphia.
Thank you for your testimony. I would like to call up the next panel. Solomon Jones. Rochelle Bilal.
She had to leave. Good morning, members of the committee. My name is Solomon Jones, and I want to start by saying two words: the people. The people. Because the people united can never be defeated. The people united can never be defeated. The people united can never be defeated. We called the people here today, and they waited for two and a half hours to have their voice. And the people are still here. The people are still united, and the people will still never be defeated. Because we are united in this. And I speak not just for the people who are here, but I speak because Brandon Tate Brown can't. I speak because Dante Dawson can't. I speak because David Jones can't. I speak because Window Washing Charlie can't. I speak because the victims of police violence in this city, who are overwhelmingly black and brown, are not here to speak for themselves. I speak for a coalition of organizations that consists of the NAACP and the National Action Network, the Philadelphia Student Union and the Guardian Civic League, Power and the Philadelphia Black Clergy, Reverend Allen Iwaler, as well as Reverend G. Lamar Stewart. I speak for tens of thousands of people in that coalition and for hundreds of thousands of people who listen to me every single day. I speak for the people. And I speak for the people because it's the people's lives that are at risk. And so even with all that has happened in the Philadelphia Police Department, there had been progress in recent years. So much progress, in fact, that just days before he resigned, Mayor Kenny called Philadelphia Police Commissioner Richard Ross the best police commissioner in America. Now, the question becomes, how does someone go from being the best police commissioner in America to being someone who's forced to resign? Now, I don't know, but I do know this: The people united can never be defeated. There were times when I had to speak up against systemic racism in the Philadelphia Police Department, and there were many people who didn't like it. Commissioner Ross was one of them. But over time, I think that he and others came to understand that I took the stances I did, not because I hated police, but because I love my people. And I came to understand that beneath that blue uniform, Ross was and is a black man. And just like any man, he has flaws, he has troubles, he has things that I'm sure he wished he had done differently. Ross resigned after two black women filed a lawsuit dealing with sexual harassment and an inappropriate relationship. And given that the new interim commissioner, who happens to be a woman, is named in that same lawsuit as one of the people who ignored sexual harassment, complaints from these women of color, this is not just about male domination or even racism. If true, it's about the culture and structure of the department. So the question now becomes, what happens now that Richard Ross has stepped down? Because whatever else he did, Ross addressed issues that were brought to him by the black community. When 343 active Philadelphia police officers posted racist or offensive material on Facebook, we protested, met with Ross and the mayor, and 72 officers were taken off the street, then 15 were fired. When a heavily armed gunman wounded six cops, Ross helped to negotiate an end to that siege, and there was no loss of life in the black community. That was change. And we realized that change only happened after the people took to the streets and demanded action. We realized it only happened when we met with city leaders and demanded accountability. And even though our actions earned us some of what we demanded, history has taught me that this is the moment when battles are lost. Because this is the moment when the people tend to take their eyes off the ball. But guess what? Not today. See, a lot of times while we raising our hands in victory, they putting their hands in our pockets. While we shouting about how we move forward, they whispering about how to knock us back. So now is the time when the community has to come together, because the system we're fighting against is waiting for us to come apart. There are many who believe that Ross was forced out because he was making that kind Now, I don't know if that's the case for sure. But now that Ross is gone, I do know this: The people united can never be defeated. And so we have some demands, and I might as well tell y'all what we told the mayor in private, we might as well go ahead and say it publicly. One of the things that we said was this: We do not want the FOP to handpick the new We want the community. We want the community to have a strong voice in who the next commissioner is going to be. And that doesn't mean some online survey that people fill out on the internet. Come on, man. We want to see it at the table. We want to see it at the table, because if you're not on the table, you're on the menu. Also, we do not want the interim commissioner to be able to make any command-level personnel changes, because those kinds of changes should only be made by the new commissioner. Now, the mayor says that it's going to be about two months, two and a half months, until we get a new commissioner. Guess what? The inspectors can do those jobs that are empty until then. They've been in the department long enough, and they know those jobs. So the bottom line is simply this, and we might as well go ahead and say it, I know some people have said some other things, but we want a black woman as the police commissioner. We want a black woman as a police commissioner so that that black woman can then step in and do what black women have always done. Black women solve problems. Black women protect our communities. Black women step up and do what needs to be done. We want a black woman as the police commissioner. And we want a black woman as a police commissioner because the mayor's statement said to us that black women were being discriminated against, weren't being listened to, were being sexually harassed, that he said, especially women of color. And so why not put a woman of color in charge in order to handle that problem? That's what the mayor said. And so our bottom line is that black women do what they do. But really, establishing a police department that works for the people is not about personality. So it's not just about putting that black woman in place. Really, it's about process. And the police contract determines that process. And so to that end, the people have some demands regarding the contract. We met with the people. There were like 300 of them there. You were there, Councilman Clark. There were a bunch of people there, and we listened to what the people said. And so we got some demands regarding the contract, and I'll say these quickly, and then I'll close. One, it must be mandatory for officers to speak up if they witness a colleague using And if they don't speak up, they must face discipline within the department and criminal charges where appropriate. Two, police officers must live in the city of Philadelphia within one year of being in order to remain Philadelphia police officers. We can no longer have our communities patrolled by people who don't live here. Three, officers who engage in criminal conduct and lose lawsuits based on their on-duty actions must pay 25% to 50% of the settlement costs from their pocket. We are tired of paying. We are tired of paying for their wrongdoing. And so these are the three items that we want the most. And guess what? We demand that if these items are not placed in the contract, that city council refuse to pass the police department budget until it's there. We are the people. This is our department. Our lives are at stake. We are standing up for our lives. And we demand that council stand up with us. Because the people united can never be defeated.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Bilal.
Good afternoon. I'm Rochelle Bilal, president of the Guardian Civic League. First of all, let me thank you, Councilwoman Green, for being woke.
That's right.
Doing the work that made this happen.
That's right.
I want to thank all the council people who are sitting in here today and brought about testimony and asked questions. I need to skip over because there's some things I think I need to clear up. Being my 27 years in the police department, being president of the Guardian Civic League, the one thing I know as a woman, as a human being, that if I said I was sorry, I didn't have to read it from a paper. Let me also clear up some things when they're saying that we got diverse people coming into the police department, and I've been fighting this since Ramsey. I'm glad that the 60 credits are gone because most of us that came on this job didn't have an associate's degree and we made out just fine. There was a time you didn't even have to have a high school diploma. And one of my best lieutenants did not have one. And he became a lieutenant. When we talk about dealing with the background process, because I have these conversations with every commissioner since I've been president of the Guardian Civic League, is some of the things stop us from being cops. And when you sit here and you say that that happened 25 years ago and that that's not me now, then if you had a charge off 25 years ago, you shouldn't be rejected for being a police officer.
Come on now.
If you had five or 10 jobs within the process knowing us, we go to the next job to pay the next amount of money. Therefore, you consider that to be unstable and we are rejected. So we don't get the job from that either. If I got a headache and my girlfriend got a Motril, maybe an 800, you know you can't get those unless they are prescribed, and she said, "Here, take one", that should not make me a drug dealer and reject me from being a police officer. Keeping it real. And you can't sit here and say, "Don't judge me by my King t-shirt" or something I did 25 years ago and yet be over a unit that judges people every day for the most minimum things and keep them from being on this job. So let me tell you what got us here today. In 2010, there was a website called Dome Lights, which was run by police officers. The Guardian shut that website down because there were police officers operating that website that called our children, who wanted to go swimming, monkeys. This is not new. When you have a corporal walking around, and mind you, those that did it are still on the job today. When you have a corporal walking around at a FOP event feeling confident enough to call a black woman who is in leadership a banana-eating monkey and still have his job. When you have a white chief inspector feels good enough to strong-arm a black female captain and still have this job, this is where we are today. Now, we at the Plainview Project. And I've been screaming about this since I came into police academy since 1986. That there's a problem and a cultural problem within the department. I don't know how many of y'all I had to talk to, how many meetings I had, how many people I had to scream out, how many lawsuits we had to file against the city for us to get here now, people are now paying attention. Their culture in the department is just that. You cannot train your way out of being a bigot. Though I understand training is necessary, but if you have it in you to be just who you are and then express it on Facebook or anywhere else, then you can't be a cop working in this city because you can't treat anybody fairly but yourself. Until we show... Until we send the message out loud and clear. Until we all say that nobody is going to be accepting this type of behavior and send a clear message. You can't suspend them for 10 days and they still have their jobs if they calling people banana-eating monkeys. You can't suspend them for 30 days if they talking about death to Islam. There need to be a clear message. There need to be policy stating that it's a clear message. And we can't keep going around saying we're going to train a racist person to be normal. Thank you.
I want to thank both of you for your testimony this afternoon and your patience in delivering those words. We called up former state senator Leanna Washington. We did not see her at this time. We'll now go to Hassan Bennett, Matthew Smith, Elder Melney DeBeauz. Okay, so I don't see Ellen DeBeauz. I'll call up Melissa Robbins. You can begin with your testimony.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Councilwoman Green and Council President Clark, for allowing us to be here today. And most important, like Solomon said, letting the voice of the people be heard. What does it mean to be a public servant? To be a sworn officer of the law? What is the culture of US policing rooted in? From slave patrols to traffic stops, not much has changed. Whether any of you want to admit this or not, we live in a society that criminalizes and demonizes the very existence of black Americans. Yes, we are criminalized daily. We are seen as people up to no good, causing trouble and bad people in general. We are not valued in this society at all. And still today, 400 years post chattel slavery, our hard-earned tax dollars contribute to the stability of all households, be it city, state, or federal, to include officers of the law. We taxpayers, black, brown, white, gay, straight, trans, old, young, literate, and illiterate. We the people, we employ you all. Therefore, when you denigrate, you disrespect, you threaten us and reduce our very own existence to that of animals that need to be put down, it is and always will be unacceptable. We must make swift and harsh decisions to ensure that you understand your role in our society. We want servants who not only take pride in their uniform, but take pride in the communities for which they serve. And in order to do that, we feel, as Solomon stated today, you must raise your families, you must reside shop and fellowship amongst those who compensate you and those who you work for. Living in an all-white bubble and commuting into neighborhoods with languages that are different, people that are different, cultures that are different, and you never take the time to open yourselves up to learning will of course create many biases and many prejudices and false fears that we see play out every single day in the streets as violent attacks against the very people who employ you. Many of you carry the mentality of your forefathers and your foremothers. You see yourselves not as officers sworn to uphold the law, but as overseers who simply patrol the streets overseeing the black and the browns with little to no discipline. You abuse us, you terrorize us, you verbally assault the citizens who you deem as to be below you. Your uniform and your code of honor, your integrity and your service must be upheld at all given times, like those veterans of us who served the United States Armed Forces. We have officers who lie, we have officers who steal, rape, abuse, and destroy public trust daily. There cannot be a place... There cannot be a police contract without the input and the oversight of us who employ you. Mr. Mayor and city council members, transparency throughout the entire process is a must. These are our tax dollars. These are our hard-earned dollars. And you are our public servants. Therefore, our voices must be heard. Not only do we desperately need criminal justice reform, but we need to reform the way in which police officers are trained. The union is a safe haven. It's a safe haven for hate. It's a safe haven for racism perpetuated by John McNeeseby himself, who cowardly called black people rabid animals who need to put down. How can we depend on a racist bigot like that to bring new recruits into our streets and neighborhood and have them respect us and honor us? How much longer will you allow the hate and the brutality and the murder and the racism in the streets of Philadelphia to reign supreme in the ranks of Philadelphia Police Department? I say no more and no longer. If you want to serve us and if you want to take our hard-earned tax dollars, then you will respect us, you will respect our mothers, our fathers, our children, and our grandparents, just like you expect us to respect you.
Councilman, good afternoon. My name's Hassan Bennett. I spent 13 years in prison due to misconduct by the police officers. And I had to represent myself in the post-conviction stages as well as through two trials to get out of prison. I spent time away from my family. I spent time agonizing, missing my family and friends. I had to go into the hole to actually learn the legal system to fight to get out of jail. Now, I say that to say that when I went to my trial, every police officer, I'm sorry, every detective that testified, testified that this police officer, that this cop, that Detective Pitts, had nothing to do with these witnesses. And every witness testified that this Detective Pitts beat them, threatened them, abused them when he was in interrogation. Now, they said Detective Pitts was nowhere around. But when Detective Pitts came and testified, he said he was with, not only around the witnesses, but he also was around the officers, the detectives, when these witnesses were interrogated. Earlier, they said that it's a culture and the police... It's a culture that's us versus them. We don't tell. But they said it's a demand, it's an obligation for the police to tell, for police officers to report other officers. Well, I want to know what incentive is it to report the other officer? Because in civil law, it says... You can't... In civil law, it says that you must failure to interfere. That's what they call it. When you don't step up and stop somebody from violating somebody's right, when you don't step up and stop somebody from misconduct, the claim is a failure to interfere. And if that claim is granted, if that claim is successful on a civil platform, it's not the police officers that's going to be paying for it. It's the tax dollars that's going to be paying for it. So when we look at it, we need, I believe, we need accountability. We need police officers to hold police officers accountability. We need people to trust the police. Because when you have misconduct, when you have wrongful convictions, you look at a neighborhood and you'll see a lot of mental health problems because depression floods. Depression reeks our neighborhood. Fear reeks our neighborhood because of years of misconduct. When you have years of people telling you you're not going to be nothing, when you have years of seeing people get brutally beaten, when you have years of going to court and seeing police officers lie on court, it leaves a sense of hopelessness, a sense of despair amongst us all. So now it becomes not police just saying it's us versus them. It has the citizens saying, the people saying, it's us versus police, which leaves a silent civil war, which in the neighborhood is the most needed. So when you look at it, I ask that better training, not only better training, because during my time down, I found out something called balance and restore justice. See, you can't just say, "Okay, we're going to do this to try to make it better." You have to restore what you took away from that community. They call it giving back. Let me give back to you. If I took $200 from you, I have to give you your $200 back. I can't just say sorry. Sorry ain't going to give you your $200 back. Sorry's not going to pay that bill. Sorry's not going to do it. And when you look at the neighborhoods that suffer, sorry's not going to get my mom back her mental health. My mom was destroyed from my conviction. Sorry's not going to build that relationships that was tore down from police misconduct. We talk about a street code called Stop Snitching. I think that was fueled by police misconduct. I think that was fueled by the thus versus them attitude. If I can't... If I can't trust you, if I can't trust you to do the right thing when I tell you, then how am I supposed to talk to you? you, then how am I supposed to talk to you? So we look at the history of this country, and we look at what we see on a day-to-day And the Facebook rants, the Facebook misconduct, the Facebook racist comments fuel something deeper in the people that the police are supposed to be representing. Thank you for hearing me out.
My name is Matthew Smith, President of the National Action Network here in Philadelphia with the office located at 1718 Caesar B. Moore Avenue. I come with a heavy heart, and it's heavy because I'm talking about the same things that I talked about thirty years ago. That's what makes this so unpleasant. And we know that the national landscape has changed where people feel very comfortable doing all kind of things, saying all kind of things to people who they feel are helpless and hopeless. My mind takes me back when I was about twenty-three years old here in this city, did not have as much religion as I have now. One night on my way home, I had a knife in my pocket. Two white policemen drove up, one of them said, "What's that in your pocket?" I said, "A knife." He said, "Pull it out." I almost pulled it out. Then I thought real quick, then I said, "If you want it, I'll, you take it out." And that has lingered with me throughout these many years, that not only did he not take the knife, he told me to go on wherever I was going. So therefore, I drew a crazy conclusion, that if I had pulled that knife out of my pocket, I would have joined that list that's out of deceased black men in the community. We don't have to sit, stand, or act as if this is strange to us, as what has been said. I hear a lot about training, I'm an educator, I believe in training, it's good to have training. But as was stated, we cannot train your heart to be just. And when I look at it from another perspective, those bad policemen, those are the ones who I'm addressing, those bad policemen have been trained, they've been thoroughly trained, they've been trained to be racist, they have been trained to beat up, shoot, kill, given people, because no one here can tell me that there are no criminals out in the far northeast, Chestnut Hill and some of the other places, that all the criminals are in North, South, and West Philly. I do not believe that. So I'm here to tell you, let's get serious about this in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, because there is a Philadelphia, Mississippi. Do we want to not be able to tell the difference between Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and Philadelphia, Mississippi? We are getting close to that point. I've been to too many funerals. Instead of going home Friday to be with the family of a beloved one who died the other day, I had to stop by a rally at front in Allegheny where a young man named Darren Lee. So it has not stopped. Darren Lee was shot, even with the members of the community hollering to the police, assisting the police, saying, "Taser him, taser him." They shot him up. He's barely hanging on to life in the local hospital. It is a sham, what has happened, that it is even necessary for us to be here. But the National Action Network is prepared to see this through. We will follow this through come hell or high water. We are determined that all of us will have a just and free society. If there's no justice, there will be no peace.
I'd like to call up Laura DeJolz.
DeJolz?
Ms. Laura DeJolz?
DeJolz.
DeJolz, okay. Reverend Robert Collier, Josh Glenn. Uh, this, people are signing up to my left, you're right. And I'll also call up Gail Blacksitt. Please proceed with your testimony. Good afternoon.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, I thought Mayor Kenny was going to be here, but acknowledging him now, Councilman-at-Large Derek Green, you are the convenor of today's hearing. Thank you so much. Other city officials, Solomon Jones, and members of the Philadelphia Coalition, working to address and resolve this very important issue. Those in attendance at this hearing on criminal justice and equity regarding the racist and discriminatory posts on Facebook by approximately three hundred and twenty-eight police persons in the Philadelphia Police Department. My name is Laura C. DeJolz, and I thank you for this opportunity to share my thoughts and concerns about this very important area of our protection, safety, and service being provided by our Philadelphia Police Department. As you can see, I am a senior citizen, and I've been a resident in this city for over seventy years, and I'm a super voter. I'm a member of the Philadelphia Freedom Riders Local Chapter of National Action Network, and a member of the Philadelphia Regional Justice Collaborative called PRJC. This testimony is about the work that was done by Plainview, I'm not reading this entire testimony, I'm trying to skip through, because I know time is of the essence. You've heard some of the statements that were posted on Facebook by, unfortunately, Philadelphia police persons. As we think about what has happened, I think it would be great for us to, in the United States, get a clear picture of just who is in control. There's a dominant group, white or Caucasian persons, that did employ white supremacy, racism, and white privilege against black people, and have inculcated these beliefs through laws, policies, and practices. They stole us, you know, kidnapped, that's what they did. They terrorized us, enslaved us, and sold us as property. That is called chattel slavery. And these people had approximately two hundred and fifty years of free labor, followed by sharecropping, Jim Crow, and our current condition that keeps us at the bottom of employment, health disparities, wealth-building levels, home ownership, et cetera. Now, after all these years of white privilege with discriminating hiring practices, the black codes, and redlining as specific examples of we, of people that are still kept in poverty, we never received reparations. What happened to the forty acres and a mule after the Emancipation Proclamation and the passage of the Thirteenth, Fourteenth, and Fifteenth Amendments? Where would white people be today if they had taken, been taken advantage of, like black people? I'm offended and appalled to know that these police persons are being paid from our tax dollars, and they believe that they are entitled to publicly insult us and verbally demean and attack us without penalty from their employers, you know, we employ them. There is a legal doctrine called qualified immunity, and I just discovered that that's what it was called. I believe it is outrageous that this is being practiced, and the police are allowed to avoid being reprimanded because of it. Now, nobody else can do that, but this is a special class of people, the Philadelphia Police. On page four of this testimony I attached, it's called information concerning qualifying immunity. And I'm just going to read one paragraph. Qualified immunity is a legal doctrine in United federal law that shields government officials from being sued for discretionary actions performed within their official capacity unless their actions violated clearly established federal law or constitutional rights. And I understand that this practice, this policy, this doctrine, is what the police are using, and that's how they're able to get away with the acts that are, I feel, criminal, that they perpetuate against many people, and especially black people. I want to recommend that you consider this attachment, and also, I would like to recommend 2020 presidential candidate Julian Castro's website, because he has a very comprehensive policy on police, policing, called People First Policing Plan. And I specified three pages, on page three, page five, and page six in particular. So I hope that you will look at those. In closing, in my opinion, some of our officers are intentionally and excessively taking too much liberty with that legal doctrine, while they're regularly and disproportionately, disproportionately violating the rights of black people. I want them to be held accountable for their actions, and they should get unsatisfactory evaluations, that's what they should receive, fines, suspensions, and dismissals immediately for these violations against their oath of office, and I know it must be in their oath of office, ethics codes, contract with the City of Philadelphia who negotiates for the citizens of Philadelphia. That's what City Council, the mayor, and others are doing for us. We can no longer accept this dehumanizing behavior from this police department, whose job it is to serve and protect us. Remember, in the Fourteenth Amendment, Article One, Section One of our Constitution, we are all free and entitled to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Thank you very much for allowing me to share.
Thank you for your testimony. I'm also going to call Kamu Shale. Is there Kamu Shale? Sharice Abrams?
Yeah.
You can come up. Ms., you can start your testimony.
My name is Kendra Vandewater, I'm a resident of West Philly, and I'm a project director for a new homicide initiative that works to improve how agencies... Yeah?
My name is Sharice Abrams. I work to improve how agencies in the city respond to homicides after they occur. So my daily work includes working extensively with law enforcement in all ranks within the Philadelphia Police Department. In both my community and job, I utilize the relationships I've built to improve the partnerships between the community and the police, and advocate to the best of my ability for those who need it when it comes to systemic issues related to law enforcement. I train law enforcement related to various things, such as improving communication, trauma, how to effectively interact with specific populations, such as young people, who I do not see here today, those with severe mental illnesses, and others. I've helped change policies and policy implementation in regards to law enforcement over the past years. Now, while my relationships with police are currently strong, they have not always been this way. In 2004, as a teenage girl, I was physically beaten by Philadelphia police officers on the corner of Broad and Gerard while I was waiting to be picked up from a party. I was thrown to the ground and called all types of racial slurs, because officers believed that I was being disrespectful by attempting to make a call before they brought me into the station. While this has been critical and has led to my career trajectory, I look back and realize there was never any accountability for the officers who did this to me, and there was never anyone advocating on my behalf throughout the process. I spent time at the juvenile detention center, I went through the court process, and I was put on probation, only told to get over what happened to me, because I was lucky it was just probation. This experience is why I excel at my job, because I understand what it's like to be on both sides of law enforcement, and what better person to help train officers to interact better with my community and improve their policies and practice. Today, there are thousands of people in Philadelphia who experience this type of treatment, and worse, by police officers who have no consequences when it comes to their poor judgment. We know about the high-profile cases regarding excessive or deadly force, but there are so many individuals in Philly who suffer at the hands of bad police, and we never even think about it. We know there are more cops, good cops, doing good in our department than those who do harm, but when are we actually going to hold those accountable who caused harm to my people? The Philadelphia Police Department has no outside unbiased entity doing proper oversight or investigations when matters like this arise. The Internal Affairs Division investigates complaints, and both the investigation and disciplinary process are secret, and they're not transparent. It's also evident that throughout the IAD process, they operate in the officers' favor from all aspects. I've reviewed countless Internal Affairs investigations and found so many inconsistencies between testimonies and evidence, and nobody ever looks further into any of this. PPD records also show that majority of civilian complaints are deemed unsubstantiated or unfounded, and the ones that are found substantiated... and the ones that are found substantiated end up with disciplinary action that is nothing more than sending officers to training or to be chastised by their supervisors. The extent of the training is also never revealed. Additionally, the Police Advisory Commission, also known as the PAC, is said to be the official oversight entity of PPD. It's part of the city's Managing Director's Office, which is the same entity the police department is under. This is beyond problematic. The PAC has no leverage, nor are the people on staff diverse or qualified to oversee the police department. I know this because I resigned from the PAC as a staff person when I was told that the issues I wanted to work on regarding oversight were quote-unquote "going to cause too many issues for the department." The Police Advisory Commission is an office that was reauthorized due to public outcry about police accountability, but what have they accomplished since the reauthorization outside of written reports with no evidence of findings that have no impact when it comes to police transparency and accountability to the public? Research shows that it has not been determined whether or not police oversight bodies are actually effective, but they can be somewhat impactful if run the correct way with correct leadership. Research also shows that police oversight bodies need to be independent from any political ties or entities in order to implement more impactful measures and processes. If the PAC continues to operate as they do under the direction of the Managing Director's Office with no authority to implement policy or practice changes, we may as well take their $500,000 budget and allocate the money in more useful ways. When speaking about police accountability, other things that are imperative to change include the contract, police recruitment, and training. If we're talking about discipline, the city needs to fight for a better contract, as the FOP should not have all of the power they have. There's no reason why a police officer should be able to be fired from the department for wrongdoing, but because of the arbitration process outlined in the contract, they end up getting their job back about a year and a half later with back pay from the time they were fired. According to the FOP president, John McNeeseby, upwards of 90% of officers win their jobs back through the arbitration process regardless of what they've done. The way we recruit officers and train them also needs to be amended. When is the last time an outside entity looked at the recruitment process as a whole or the psychological testing components of recruit applicants? Why are we hiring officers from small racist towns who come to Philadelphia and treat our residents like scum because they've never dealt with minority or black cultures? Officers make mistakes, and they're human beings like the rest of us, but as any other elected official, they need to be held to a higher standard, and they are not at this point. When it comes to policing a city of over 1.5 million people with many of our people being poor, they need to learn how to do better. This higher standard includes consequences for their actions, just as civilians like us receive consequences for our actions on a daily basis. Police officers also need more extensive, more well-rounded, and consistent training from trainers outside of the police department. I spend countless hours with officers who have spent 20 years on the force but need ongoing training on things like language, communication, or crisis intervention. They've spent 20 years on the force only socializing with other cops. You tell me how good of a police officer you would be if you spent 20 years only socializing with other cops. Furthermore, the department has about 177 directives or policies that guide officers in their daily ways of policing. You could test every single officer right now about their policies today, and I guarantee 95% of them wouldn't know what they are. This is a problem, and if you don't know your own policies as an officer, how do you effectively do your job? You don't. There are so many things that police officers do that are swept under the rug, and the public has no idea what goes on because these things are kept hidden and in-house by the department. It needs to stop. I'm tired of the excuses, I'm tired of the lack of accountability, I'm tired of people who are wealthy only having rights when it comes to law enforcement, and I'm tired of these things being a detriment to my community. It's also city council's job to push for legislation and change in our city when it comes to things like police accountability, policies, transparency, and discipline, starting with the fact that these hearings need media coverage, and they should not be scheduled at a time when most people who have police interaction have to go to work or have to be in school. It's time to do what we're supposed to do, and that's to care about the people we police and to make transformational change, not the bare minimum. Books have been written historically about how awful the Philadelphia Police Department has been in terms of treatment of people, especially black and brown people. And while our department has come a long way, we have a lot of work to do, and it needs to start by amending the police contract in order for us to hold officers accountable in appropriate ways. In the meantime, people like Acting Commissioner Coulter should be held accountable. Let us not forget that she has been named in a lawsuit as being one of leadership who has blatantly dismissed complaints from female police officers who have reported sexual harassment. I urge you to take a deep dive into the contract, the training, and the recruitment process, because if we don't change this contract and make an example of the officers doing wrong, we're going to continue on this same racist path, and there will never be any sustainable change in regards to accountability of police. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Also like to call up Jose Torado. Jose Torado? Ms., you can start your testimony.
So, well, I'm Sharice Abrams, and I'm here not as a racist, but a victim of racism. I see it a lot, and I've experienced it. You know, my main concern is that we have a new, there's some changes being made in the city as far as public safety, and we have a new police commissioner. And I was unaware, I just found out today about, you know, the T-shirt incidents and everything, but it just raised a flag to me that we have a new commissioner, and I just want to assure, I just want to feel safe. I would like for my loved ones, as well as my friends, to feel safe, you know what I mean? Because there's so much going on, there's a lot of racism that's being ignored, a lot of people putting on faces like they aren't racist when they really are, you know, and later on, things happen, then we have to go through marches trying to get justice, and nothing's, nothing's changed. So, I just, I don't, I don't have what I've written down, so it was just meant for me, I guess, to, but I jotted down a few things that is very important. It affects our community, you know, and one of the things, I can understand how other officers may feel intimidated by certain officers, other officers, and I'm not even on the force, because if we can suffer intimidation as individuals in the street, you know, we have, first of all, I don't think there's really thing, anything as a bad cop, you have good cops, I mean, not a good cop, you have bad cops, you have real cops. There's no such thing as really a bad cop, because, first of all, police officers' jobs are not easy, you know, they get prejudged, you know, because of what the bad ones do, you know, and it's very important that this commissioner, whoever's going to be the next commissioner and stick with it, that they enforce this. And from my understanding, Commissioner Ross was doing that, you know, cracking down on the racism, a lot of things that was going on, and it's like quite ironic that all of a sudden, he has to step down. It's dissatisfying to me, and I'm, I'm quite sure that it's dissatisfying to a lot of citizens in this, in this, in this city, you know, it's like, I'm, one thing, I'm so happy that, I applaud him on how he handled the incident at Broad, up, up Erie Avenue, the police standoff, and it was handled in a way where no one got hurt, no one, no shots were, no one got shot, no lives were taken, you know what I mean? And I think that he did a good job of that. And if you do the math, as far as like in, all around the country is racism, like in El Paso, you have some, someone that, that murdered 27 people, he made it out alive. I don't see the problem with an officer handling things the way it should be, where as though lives can be spared, and my mic is going off, but this is important to me, and I'm quite sure it's important to other peoples as well, because there should not be a comparison on humanity, and, and as far as doing a job, you know, and if a job is well done, I don't see a reason for someone should have to be removed from that position. I'm not quite sure why it happened, but it doesn't feel right, and it raised questions, you know, and I just want to assure that whatever's going to happen, happen, or whatever, but like I said, the purpose of me being here is I want my community and my people to feel safe, not just far as police officers, of anyone of a different race, you know, when they come around our neighborhoods or whatever, we won't be prejudged, misjudged, and everything, no type of special treatment, you know what I mean? Because there's a problem that's going on, and it's time for that to come to an end, you know, and then, I would like the commissioner, unfortunately, she's not here, she left or whatever, but, you know, I think she should have stayed through the whole thing, this whole setting, to find out how other people feel, not just the, the people on the board, you know what I mean, or the clergy, or the body. This is the public here that it affects, you know, but, it's, I'm just hoping that the outcome is, is going to be for improvement, you know what I mean? To my knowledge, I think Mr. Ross was doing a gold-kay job, but things have been changed. I'm just hoping that it don't get worse, you know, and that's why I'm here today. And I'd like for them to keep in mind also that the poverty rate is high, so there will be, there are a lot of people on the streets or whatever, you know, as far as homeless, and they, they're not, you know, they're struggling out there, some don't have addresses where they can even receive food stamps and things like that, so they're out there, and work is not easy to find, you know. I know, I have an associate of mine who's, in her apartment, she might lose her apartment, she's losing her apartment, and she cannot even pay her rent, and she's looking for a job, and she can't find one, so her and her nine-year-old son, child is facing eviction. So, what my, my point of this is, when it's like this, times are hard, people are subjected to illegal activity, you know, just to survive. That's one thing, it trickles down, it's not just a police commissioner, but it trickles down, it stems from poverty, different thing that's going on connected to, you know, the police department, you know what I mean? So I'm hoping that they take that into consideration also, because I myself am faced with, you know what I mean, battling of being from, a step from poverty, you know what I mean? But I'm just hoping that all these things would be taken into consideration, and I'm really hoping that they enforce against this racial, the racism that's going on in these forces, because it's affecting a lot of lives. I mean, when, when people, we have police officers murdering black people, unarmed black people, you know, and getting away with it, you know, and then here it is, they destroying, not only they're taking away lives, they're destroying the lives of their family members, you know what I mean? They, it's putting effect on them, and then, by us not getting justice when we ask for it, you know what I mean, it's causing, it's causing a lot of, a lot of hypertension in our communities. People are subjected to pacifying themselves with drugs and alcohol to try to deal with the situation, their voices are being ignored, and something really needs to change, because if it don't, if it doesn't change, it's, it can only get worse, you know, and I don't feel comfortable with racial, racism, racist police officer, or anybody being responsible for my life.
Thank, thank you for your testimony. Thomas Fender, is there a Thomas Fender? You're with him? Okay. Mildred Cress?
So, I hope she, I hope she did a good job.
My name is Gail Lax, I'm on the Power Live Free team, and thank you very much for holding this public hearing. Thank you, City Council. The Philadelphia Police Department has a disciplinary code of conduct which prohibits, quote, "any action or conduct which objectively constitutes discriminatory or harassing behavior based on race, color, gender, religion, national origin, age, ancestry, sexual orientation, disability, or gender identity." This is just one example of what already exists in the department's code of conduct. These items were all in place when recent abuses occurred, but is this code of conduct enforced on a day-to-day basis? We have seen that this code is not enforced. We need an independent police oversight agency that includes citizens from the community, an agency that has the power to subpoena and discipline officers who violate the department's code of behavior. We need a police department that fully cooperates with this agency and does not hide or block the process of holding police accountable. If an officer is disciplined, they do not need to be rewarded with a transfer or a promotion or even business as usual. The disciplinary history of each officer needs to remain in the officer's file. If transferred, the citizens of the officer's new district need to know why that officer was transferred. We also need an arbitration system for the discipline of officers that is fair and does not side with the police most of the time, essentially giving police officers no incentive to change their behavior, and creating the culture in the police department that leads to division between cops and community. Despite the hard work of many police officers who uphold the code of discipline, we can't just talk about a few bad apples. Now, we have to consider the health of the whole orchard.
Thank you for your testimony. Also like to call up Phil Lockett, Sylvia Metzler.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Ms. Canyones. I'm not normally to this forum. My name's Jose Torado. My brother is Joel Johnson. Most people won't know who that is. That is the homeless guy who got shot by a Philadelphia police officer detective up on G Street in North Philadelphia. I've been very quiet. I have not said a word, I've let the due process. I left it in the hands of the committee to rightfully take action as needed. Unfortunately, 111 days have passed. The whole family has been very quiet. We've stayed and waited for justice. We could have been loud and rebunkish, we could have been, you know, going out, you don't see me with a script, I don't have one. What I speak is straight from the heart. We've talked to, I've got my attorney, Thomas Fender, who's basically tried to assist us throughout this whole process, and we've been basically stonewalled everywhere we went. Every time we come by, we went, we went to local community people, we try to find out what's going on, we get the, oh, it's in investigation. And if I'm speaking out of term, I apologize, that's just from what I get. I mean, like I told you before, it's not scripted, it's not going to read it. I don't have any notions towards police officers. I like them, I mean, they've been with me a while, and previously, I was one. So, it's, I've been on both sides of the spectrum, bad and good, both sides, but it's not about me, I'm actually here for Joel. I will ask this committee to see if they can set up an oversight or some kind of committee to assist on this, and we don't even know if this officer, I mean, the famous thing that police officers always did was, he's on administrative duty, he's in a DPR unit, which is the Police Differential Unit, or, you know, they put him somewhere and they leave him there for a while, and we wait, we wait. How much do we have to wait? The video is plain and clear. Everyone's seen it. wait? The video is plain and clear. Everyone's seen it. Police directives clearly state that individual is taught to double tap, two rounds. This officer took four rounds. Thankfully, only one struck my brother. But at the same time, this officer was firing in the direction of the community, into residential houses. I don't know what was on that officer's mind. I'm not here to judge him, but I feel like no one is judging him right now. I'm not blaming anybody in this council because you guys were not there, but I would implore you to see what can be done for justice. And I'm not sitting here, nothing personal, I'm not making it a, a black and white thing. My brother is a mixed race. He is black, he is Hispanic. If you look at him in color, he's about your color, Mr. Green. But that doesn't change who he is. He's still a human being. And as a human being, if someone did this to your brother, your cousin, you'll want answers. I don't think I need to be loud to be right. I could be quiet, soft-spoken, respectful, as my mom and my dad told me to be. But I implore this committee to assist in one way or another to get some resolution. We, like I said again, we don't know where this officer is, we don't know if it's justice, all we get is the same thing over and over. I don't want to be a dog and pony show, sitting out there on streets and yelling and screaming to get my point across, if we can just get some kind of resolution. And the reason most people don't know who I am is because I kept myself quiet. I know a couple of people, I, but I don't bother. I mean, she's fabulous with the community and everything else, but she has a lot on her plate. I wanted the justice to do what they needed to do, let the department do what they need to do. And to this point, and I was on the department for 10 or 15 years, I'm seeing basically nothing in return. I see a lot of faces here, they know who I am, they knew what I was on, on the job. People know who I am. When I served, I served righteously. I asked for the same thing in return. I'm not asking much, I'm not asking for a pound of flesh, I'm not in here, I'm asking for justice. So if there's anything that this committee can do respectfully, I ask for that. My attorney is Thomas Fender. If you notice, anyone here has not heard one peep from my family. We did not play the circus role, we did not do the, the things, we've had plenty of reporters come to our house and we said nothing. But it feels like this is basically being thrown under the rug, like if nothing's going to happen, and I, all I'm doing is basically letting justice handle itself. I know, I understand justice takes time, but how long? When it's black and white, you can see it, it's in video. So I applaud, see if you can assist us in any fashion, my family would be graciously appreciated for it. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for your, your testimony. Is there Cora Brinkley? Sultan Ashley Shah, I know I saw Sultan around. Deborah Washington?
Good afternoon, Councilman Green, and thank you to all the council people who are still here, appreciate it very much, and good afternoon to all my friends and neighbors and sisters and brothers here. My name is Sylvia Metzler. I'm a member of the Live Free Committee of Power and a member of the Ethical Society. Why am I here today? Why are we here today? As I heard Solomon Jones say this morning on the radio, "We are here to save lives." The Plainview Facebook posts sicken me, but they didn't surprise me. And it seems that good cops don't always denounce bad cops. We know there are good cops. We know it's a very hard job. I'm in the medical profession, it's another hard job. And there are good doctors and there are good nurses, and there are incompetent and racist nurses and doctors who need to be called out. We carry stethoscopes and reflex hammers, but police, police, those whose hearts are full of hatred, fear, and racism, carry nightsticks and guns. We are here today to save lives. I've spoken out already about the findings of the Plainview project at protest with this sign, had my picture in the paper, with a letter to the editor in The Inquirer, critical of the police who are public about their hatred of black and brown people, their hatred of the LGBTQ community, and of Muslims, and of women, and of protesters, and that these police advocate violence against these groups. As a result of being in the, in the public, a police officer that I know warned me, he said, "Sylvia, you better be careful." And sure enough, about two weeks later, my car was vandalized over and over again in front of my house. So I am a little afraid today to speak out again against police racism and violence, but as Solomon Jones reminded me, "We are here to save lives." We want the new police contract and the new police commissioner to remember and deplore what happened to Rodney King, and to treat everyone with the dignity and respect that they deserved. We think we should definitely look at a black woman for this job. And lastly, I call on my white sisters and brothers to use our white privilege to work for justice and to become strong, outspoken anti-racists, because we need to be here to save lives and to demand, and to demand changes in the toxic racist culture of the Philadelphia Police Force.
Thank you for your testimony. Deborah Washington, okay. So you're next, and then Mr. Washington. Elias, is there Elias here?
I'm always last. Thank you. My name is Phil Lockett, AKA Kasu. Kasu arrived from Temple Town North, and I want to first say thank you to City Council for being here and giving us this chance to pour our hearts out to save our city and our citizens. A lot of my sentiments was already spoken today, and, but my main thing here is, I have a question, how can a union use qualified immunity to put bad cops back on the force? Because we all know in the hood that the cops always break the law to enforce the law in the hood. And they're, they're not supposed to get qualified immunity, but because the FOP thinks we don't know nothing about it, they overstep their boundaries and violate the Constitution and grant these cops back on the, on the police department to run amok in the city. I want to know what law, what piece of paper does that, other than qualified immunity? And two, when a cop gets disbarred from the police department, it should be like a bad discharge from the service. He could never be a cop down the road, around the corner, or across the hall ever again. So we can eradicate this blue code of silence, along with this FOP qualified immunity, a policy that they are using to, to jack us up in our hoods. We do not have a chance to make our hood good because of the bad cops that come in there and keep us running. They keep us running with, with, with bad stuff. We know what we have to do in our communities and we're trying to do it. But if you keep sending in bad cops that got a reputation of blanking us out, you, you're never going to fix our communities. And with that, I'm going to let you go to dinner. I'm done for today. I was number four on the list, I was number four on the list, and, and I'm always pushed to the back. So, so next time I come up here, I'm not going to be so nice, you know, and, and Councilman Green, thank you again. Thank you again, City Council.
Thank you, sir. I'll, I'll see you outside of City Hall next time. Arnold Jones, is there Arnold Jones here? Is there Arnold Jones? Charmaine Butler, Charmaine Butler, Abdullah Thomas, Abdullah Thomas, Nobila Bay, Nobila Bay, Guy Williams, Guy Williams, Thelma Harkam, Robert Black. Okay, sir?
Yeah, my name is Deborah Washington. I am the Senior Policy Organizer at Media Mobilizing Project, and I've, thank you for holding this hearing. To start, I want to change the narrative around violence in this city. It is not the police, it is not the job of the police to protect our communities from violence or to chain, to stop it from happening, I'm sorry. It is not the job of the police for them to stop violence from happening, specifically when we're talking about violence that is based in poverty. That is our elected officials' jobs, right? So I have an issue with how policing is handled in this, in this city, because we use our police officers as first responder, as first responders for issues that they are not qualified to handle, right? They should not be first responders for mental health issues. We need dedicated medical personnel that are able to complete those tasks for us, because when you are a hammer, everything looks like a nail. So when you are a police officer and you come across a situation where there is someone who is having a, a mental breakdown or an episode, that person looks like a criminal and not like a hospital patient as they should be, right? Additionally, crime that is based in poverty has to be legislated around to reduce. You cannot reduce crime by arresting your way out of it, right? Most crime is based in, in poverty and people trying to meet the need, their needs, because the neighborhoods that they, they live in lack the opportunities that they need for them to provide for their families. And in that, in that wake, it does not make any sense for us to continue to send police officers into poor neighborhoods to arrest people just for crimes that are, are, that are stemming from poverty. But that's not the majority, that's not really the reason why I, I'm here. I want to talk about police and technology. At my job, I focus on what's called digital justice. It's the intersection of the marginalization that our communities face every day and technology, and how technology plays into that marginalization in today's time, in 2019. And I'm also what the FBI would call a black identity extremist, right? So right after Charlottesville, the FBI released a report saying that black people fighting for their freedom, black people that are practicing their First Amendment protected free speech of dissent against the marginalization of our communities are a threat. They're more of a threat to this, to this country than the Taliban, right? Like, let's put this into perspective. They also, we found, that was leaked about a week or two ago, that they are also calling for the surveillance of activists who are speaking out against what is going on at our border and immigration, and calling them anarchists. Now, these designations are then sent to our local police departments for them to execute and for them to watch the people that the FBI have designated as a threat for just practicing their First Amendment speech, right? And so this is all, this all plays into the policing, the racism that we are experiencing on the ground. But see, we are looking at this as like a woven sweater. We're pulling a, we are looking at a string at the bottom of the sweater and we want to cut it, right, instead of pulling it to see where it leads us. And so I am worried, as this city turns into a quote-unquote "smart" city, right, we're, we're underneath a plan right now, or they're, they're going to be retrofitting all of the streetlights in this city to operate off of a mesh network that can then be, that can then be upgraded to have cameras that operate on a mesh network. A mesh network is a, it's basically like a, a website, or you know, internet connection, a private internet connection that allows for the government or whoever to connect to different devices, you know, regardless of how far away, whatever. But my issue is, is that when we know that there is sustained racism on our police force, why are we giving them, why is our city council paying for, because you all have the power of the purse, why is it that you all are paying for an expansion of surveillance, which we know the peoples that are going to be affected by the surveillance are black, brown, immigrant, and queer, like they always have been? And so I'm asking, I'm coming before City Council, because I don't know all the intricacies in the way the Philadelphia police plan on executing their surveillance on our communities against our activists who are pushing, who have historically pushed for all of us, not just black, not just black, not white, brown, for all of us to enjoy the promises that this, that our Constitution bestowed upon us so many hundreds of years ago. So I'm, I'm sorry, I lost my point. So yeah, I, I'm calling on you all to find out what are the implications on this racist police department, what implications the FBI's report that we know for a fact has been given to our local police departments. We need for you to find out how those, how those designations impact the policing, impact specifically the designation, the allocation of money where, because the allocation of money on the surveillance of black activists versus the folks who normally do most of the domestic terrorism in this country, which are the racists, the white supremacists that are among us. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there Tanya Parker? Tanya Parker. Is anyone else here who wishes to testify that has not signed up? Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Elias. I'm 52 years old, single parent, raise four boys. Their ages is 32, 30, 28, he's autistic, and my youngest will be 27. I raised my kids in the, in the worst neighborhoods, but, single-handedly, I emphasize to them, if they become suspected of something, I will be the first one to report to authorities, okay? One, that's the way, the way we need to raise our children. Now, I'm here because I sent an email to Dwight Clark, Quinones, Cindy Bass, Jim, Eileen Jim, and Quinana Johnson about three months ago, three to four months ago, way before they went on vacation. And this has to do with what's perpetuating the drug epidemic in our, in our community, okay? It's about the bodega stores and the stop-and-go stores and the beer deli stores, okay? When you guys go home today, take a look, take a look at your community and see what you see. My question to all you guys, okay, council people, all right, because there's a, there's a couple council people that are homeowners in these communities. Because there's a couple councilpeople that are homeowners in these communities. And I've been researching on my own, going to these stores, okay? And I've seen a couple bodega stores and a couple of these council members' property that do not sell drug paraphernalia, things that, you know, drug paraphernalias, all these type of wrappers, cherry flavor, all these tobacco wrappers. This is what's perpetuating the drug epidemic. Well, those two stores do not sell that on the street where they own these properties, okay? But all over their council, all over their ward, it's infested with these stores, okay? Is it because these low-income properties are selling cheap? And these people come from all walks of life and target these neighborhoods and buy these properties? And you as City Council members, this has been going on more than 30 to 35, 40 years. I remember back then, 50, 40-something years ago, grocery stores only sold milk, bread, eggs, and food condiments and cigarettes. Why are you people allowing that to happen in our community? Because these type of prop... These type of stores are not in the far northeast, okay? Because those communities will say, "No, we're not going for that nonsense." So, all you council members, you don't see this was perpetuating, was part of perpetuating the drug epidemic? You're allowing these people to buy these properties for cheap? And they know what sells. What sells is the beer and anything that, you know, enhances people to do drugs, right? What are you people gonna do about that? Kensington is in real bad shape. There's two stores there that don't sell it. One of your constituents, a young kid, 28 years old, I went to your office and asked him, "This deal, what's the deal with this?" Okay? You know what he told me? And he's 28 years old and I'm 52 years old? He said, "Well, those two stores that don't sell that probably don't have the zoning or whatever, right? But all over has the zoning. What's up with that? What are you gonna do about our community?" These owners in these stores, when they close the gates, you know what they do? They made money off of us, right? Because they know what sells, right? So, now that money that they made from all of us who is addicted to all types of drugs, go home with that cash and send their kids to college, right? So, what are you guys gonna do about this? I haven't gotten a response, okay? And these stores know what sells and these stores have all these drug-addicted people hanging around those stores. Front and Clearfield is a good example, okay? But Howard and Dolphin store don't sell that. What are we gonna do? So, I want to create a coalition. I want to find out the business association of those communities, what type of meeting they have with you guys at City Council, if you have any, or what kind of profit the city of Philadelphia makes off of these business owners? Because something's not right. Do they sit at the table and discuss what kind of new food they're gonna sell? They know what sells. Tobacco wrappers, the smoked crack and smoked marijuana, the little paraphernalia pipes, the sex pills. Can you guys do something about that? Are you guys gonna do something about that? And that's what I want to know. And I want my email to be responded regarding this. Totally... And guess what? Another thing. This makes the police officer's job even harder, too. So, we're not helping them out. Yeah, we had bad cops, but we're not helping them out because you guys choose to ignore that. I believe that City Council, over the years, including Dwight Clark, never even thought about it. Now, you guys gonna have... You can go to sleep and think about this. Thank you.
My name is Robin Sifedine Black.
Fortunately, I'm gonna say that there's a few councilpeople that's here that had enough patience to stay here to the last couple minutes to hear what the individuals of this city still has to say. We gotta commend those three people here and yourself for allowing them to take their time and listen to the little people in the community that's still here, that've been here since early today, just waking their turn to be able to say something to council. It's not every day we get a chance to speak to City Council, and I think it's a blessing as God. I speak for the Muslim community here in Philadelphia. We had a rally maybe about three weeks ago outside City Hall in reference to the racist cops putting things on Facebook about killing Muslims, that about the Muslim Islamic religion wasn't a religion. I'm just here to tell you today that a good Christian is a good Muslim. A good Muslim is a good Jew. We believe in all the books. We believe in all the prophets. We believe in humanity. We believe that once people get dissatisfied, you can make a change. The only way that things can change in our community as a whole, the people have to be dissatisfied enough to be able to bring about change. Dissatisfaction brings about change. And in reference to the cops, the good cops that's in our community, they need to stand up because they're getting a bad facial representation of the police department for a few bad apples. When you got a tree, you got a few bad apple. You take the few bad apples, you get rid of them. So, that way your orchid will still be good. But if you allow that tree to keep those... It starts to affect the rest of the apples. And now, you got a whole bag of apples that's no good. Y'all guys in City Council, ma'am, misses, and men, the people elected y'all to represent each and every one of our communities in whatever area we might be in. Now, they say I'm in the most impoverished community in the city of Philadelphia. That's supposed to be Strawberry Mansion. But we need help. We need help from our elected officials to make sure that we can get out of poverty. All we doing is asking for some help. I see police... I went up Haynes Street just last week, and I was fortunate enough to talk to some police officers. I parked, I wanted to ask them if it was already for me to park there. He said, "You know what? You's an older guy. We don't have no problem with you. We know that you pretty subtle guy." And I said, "I appreciate y'all." It's... I think it's how you treat people, how you talk to people, how you feel people. You know, you can read people. You can look at a person's... Sometimes you can read a person's face and see if you want to even be bothered with them or not. All I'm saying is, look into your heart. Each and every one of the City Council people here, look into your heart. And if you got children, we have children, too. And we got to do this for our future. If not, then we got a real big problem. Our future is in bad shape. Thank you for your time and your patience, and I commend you, brother, for doing the job well done. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Ms. Parker, you're next. And then, there was two other young ladies that want to testify. If you could come up as well. Ms. Parker, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Parker, committee person, 28/4, and community activist. I would just like to call this subject the Half and the Half Knots, for I go to many meetings concerned about my community, and every time I look at what they call their data, all I see is dots, where it is that they're saying that the homicide rate in my below poverty-stricken neighborhood is so high. I'm not here to say good cops, bad cops, because if that so be the case, we had a good cop by the name of Makiva. He knew my mother, he knew me, he knew my children and my grandchildren. We don't have him anymore, and that's like a disadvantage to what people say the village. We don't call it the village no more because there's no connection. There's divide and conquer on levels higher in the people that be, and then it's divide and conquer within our neighborhoods where our children can't cross one street without fear of not returning back home. When it is that I've heard what I heard today, at the end of the day, we have formed a group with a man by the name of Robert Reed about trauma, because, see, that's the whole... That's the key to the whole thing right here is trauma. We're traumatized because we live below poverty, therefore we're scuffling and we're struggling to get the things that other people might find to be easy, including a good education for our children, including help for our senior citizens, including mental, mental places where it is that we can go because it seemed like this has been such an unleashing of mental illness on my community. Therefore, we're forced to self-medicate by all means necessary just to make it through the next hour. I sit here before you as a mother who lost two children to the streets of Philadelphia, and as part of that, my daughter is now mental, mentally challenged and drug abused. I would like to know, as part of the half and half knots, the first thing we need to do is actually come to the table because y'all know what we don't know. We voted you in because we believed in the speeches in which it is that you gave us before the election. We now need to do a data on you all. We now need to see, have you done anything that you told us that you were gonna do so that we may raise above that poverty line? Please do not misunderstand me. Strawberry Mansion is not hopeless. We're not helpless because we are hood. We help others on the deli. That's what we do. But we still need other people to come along and give us what it is that they have. Many of programs have been allotted to Strawberry Mansion because we're below the poverty line. These programs get started after the money is collected and its funds have been spent, then we're left in suspended animation, which traumatizes us to not trust anybody unless you're my next-door neighbor, unless you're the mailman, unless you're the guy who runs the poppy store with all the paraphernalia that my brother was just talking about. We're here today because, see, like I said, I'm not blaming this cop or that cop because I had a couple cops to save my life. I've had some who harassed me, and it might have been because of my mouth, freedom of speech. They don't want us to exercise that. They want everybody to take the fifth, but the fifth of what? I don't want Henny. I don't want vanilla, E and J. I want help for my community that's bleeding and oozing out the undersides and nobody's even paying it attention. I want help to know that we don't have to be those developers to come in and buy our houses, but yet we can buy one ourselves and take somebody that's homeless, mostly children. We have a lot of homeless children in my community because their parents are either dead or incarcerated. In case you didn't know that, then I don't mind informing you about that. We had recently had a meeting with Senator Vincent Hughes, and I want to commend him for even willing to come to Strawberry Mansion. And in there, there was a police officer. And because when Robert Reed and us had this program about the trauma, we asked him, "Was half of that money going to the police?" Because we wanted to know why there was not a police at the table with us while we was talking about trauma. He told us, "Yes." But yet, when Senator Hughes brought the police officer up there, he knew nothing about it. So, therefore, once again, money's been allotted to us through the government because we're below the poverty line, but it's not being spent on us. Once again, just think about this, the half and the half knots.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for teaching me a new acronym for this evening, helping others on the deli.
Those are suspects in our communities. They're suspects. So, don't chop into those stories.
Okay. Good afternoon. Thank you for holding these hearings. I agree with the person who said earlier about the timing. As you can see, the room is almost empty. I think it could have been scheduled at a better time. I'd like to start talking about, years ago, you know, y'all might be too young to remember, the public transportation system was called PTC, okay? I was 15 years old, Friday afternoon, coming home from school. The bus was a Spruce Street bus. I'm not sure if it was called the 42 then. For some reason, I think it was called the D-Bus. When I got to 52nd and Spruce, the bus was late, you know? It was a crowded... People had crowded, you know, waiting for the bus. When the bus came, the driver said, "Oh, your pass has expired." I said, "Well, okay, what you want me to do? You know, I've been standing here. You're late." He decided that I needed to pay him more money. You know, I didn't have any more money. I didn't have another school token. This man proceeded to call the police, okay? The police came. They ordered everyone off the bus but me. They took... They ordered the driver to drive to 55th and Pine to the police station where I was arrested and booked for not having a pass, for not paying... I don't know what the fare was then, but, I mean, it was less than a dollar. But just think about the impact of that, okay? The cost of that, the time, the energy, you know? I cannot imagine that he would have taken a little white girl and made the bus driver do that. That's just unimaginable for anybody in this room, okay? That was my introduction to the police department of Philadelphia as a young teenager going to Catholic school, okay? Another time, I was a member of the Black Panther Party when I was older, and a cop wanted us off the bus. I don't remember the incident, but in us getting off the bus, I didn't move fast enough, so he yanked me, consequently dislocating my shoulder, okay? Another incident with the police. I don't think it's about training. I guess I should be thankful that I'm, you know, wasn't shot. But I don't think training has anything to do...
Ms., hold on. Can you send your name for the record? We didn't get your name for the record.
Okay. My name is Ayesha K. Elmecchi.
Thank you.
Sure. As I was saying, I don't think training has anything to do with it because this doesn't happen in the northeast or in the suburbs. You know, police have training, okay? I think it's... They have to determine where they're going to use their training and where they're not, okay? The sad part of it... I work in the school system. The sad part of it is the... Our youth are watching the police. You know what? Many times in working with preschoolers, that's what they say, that, "You know what? If you ask them what they want to be, 'I want to be a cop. I want to be a policeman.'" You know? They're watching the policemen. So, when the policemen are telling our youth, "Oh, you know what? You need to tell what, you know, your friends did," you know, and the children have a code of no snitching, so do the police. Okay, so, you know what? The police cannot say, "Oh, you know what? We could do more if the community will cooperate." You know, yes, we might get more done if the police would cooperate with one another. If you have a, you know, the situation we keep hearing about, bad apples, you know? Yes, you remove the bad apples, but if you turn around and put them back in the bucket, what's the point? I watched the movie, well, the first episode of When They See Us, and the reality that I had, what really made me sad, and this is just part one, you know what? It's not a movie. You know, that's all I felt through the whole thing. This is not a movie. You know, this is real life. Those are real children. And this happens over and over and over again in our communities, you know? Police are putting drugs, you know, on... Planting drugs on people, you know, lying on people. I mean, in a courtroom, they'll come and tell a lie. You know, they're never charged with it. It's not a big deal. But you want the community to do differently. I feel like, you know, with this attitude that the police can get away with anything, you know, and it's said in Philadelphia, they can get... You can get away with murder, it teaches us that might makes right. You know what? And for schoolchildren, that translates into bullying. We have a horrendous bullying problem. Children are even committing suicide behind being bullied. Children are even committing suicide behind being bullied, you know? But we watch this bullying, that's what is going on with the police. You know, they're being bullies because they have a gun, they have a badge, you know? It all boils down to, we want justice. Call it the criminal justice system. You know, we'd like to see some justice come out of there, you know? Thank you very much.
Ms., if you could state your name for the record.
Uh, excuse me. God loves you all. I just wanted to just say just a silent prayer before I speak, please. Thank you.
If you could just state your name for the record, and then you can continue. If you could state your name for the record and then-
Oh, my name? I'm sorry, my name is Carol Green. And I just wanted to say a silent prayer before I speak because I'm worried that I won't say the right thing. Excuse me, I'm sorry if I offended anyone. Uh, excuse me, God loves you all. My name is Carol Green and I, I called 911 in 2005 because I was worried about a sister of mine who I hadn't seen Thanksgiving. When the police came, there were two cars. One was on 22nd and Walnut. And the other was on 22nd Street. The one on 22nd Street there was a white police officer, maybe. I say white, I don't know if he was white or not, but he might have been white. And forgive me if I said anything wrong, but he had said something to me concerning the police officer that was on Walnut Street. I didn't know which one to take to my sister's apartment with me or not because I couldn't get into her apartment to see if she was all right. So the one that was on 22nd Street had said, uh, um, he's all yours concerning the one that was on Walnut Street, who was in the car by himself. So he went to my sister's apartment building and he got in there and went up to her floor. And I went to her apartment, you know, to see if she was all right. And when I found out she was all right, I let him know that, but he didn't want to leave. And he was acting different. And so because he was acting different, you know, I, I knew something was wrong. But he didn't want to leave and I was afraid maybe he would try to kick her door down to get in. And, and I didn't want him to, to hurt her anything. I just felt that something was wrong and he might try to hurt her. So then he got angry with me and he began to act different towards me. And he demanded me to get on, he was like, it was like he demanded me to get on the elevator. And I was upset and I knew something was wrong. I was, I became afraid and I started hollering for help because I knew that something was wrong when he had commanded, it was like a command, get on the elevator, like that. It was like one of those kind of commands. And when I began to scream, not scream, but I was calling for help. And my sister didn't come out of her apartment, maybe she didn't hear. And then there was this other person, he came out of his apartment. And then what the policeman did, he began to take me by my coat and choke me around my neck with my coat. And he was like pushing me like up against the wall. And I had like this tumor, you know, I was, had a, but like a 15 pound tumor, it might have been 15 pounds at the time. And he was like pushing me up towards the wall and I wouldn't fight back. You know, God was helping me not to do that. And then I felt a blow to my right head, the right side of my head. And then he called for backup. And one of the white neighbors came out of his apartment and he had like curly looking, blonde looking hair, like, and he didn't maybe say anything, he went back into his apartment maybe and then, but, but he, the, the police officer called for backup. And then he was maybe trying to convince them that I was having delusions. And they handcuffed me on 23rd and Walnut Street and took me to 8th and Race, I'm not 8th and Race, the hospital on 8th Street, 8th and Spruce, Pennsylvania Hospital. And they had this guy waiting there for me, he had on white gloves. And they took me into this little room and made me undress in front of an open window, took a needle and put it in my right arm and my arm started breaking out. And I was kept in that hospital for about five days. And then I was let out and I went to a place called, uh, it was on, it used to be on 11th Street, 34 South 11th Street? I heard you talking, well, I, it was a place where you go to get help when things like that happen to you. 34 South 11th Street. That was in 2005, November 27th that happened. So I went there and they had put me in this little room and they had a tape recorder in there, maybe they were taping what had happened to me. And I didn't know the officer's name, but they kept making me come back over and over again and nothing ever happened. I never knew the police officer's name that did that to me. And it seemed like they were trying to make it look like I was crazy. And I don't know if they had psychiatrists or psychologists there when I, when I was at the Pennsylvania Hospital for five days. And they gave me a cardiogram, do you call it cardiogram? Where they test your heart? They were taking blood from me and so I haven't been able to do anything about it even till today. And so all the police officers aren't bad. I know they're not. And I know that, okay, does the red mean I'm almost finished?
No, I thought you were about to conclude. I thought you were about to conclude.
But something has to be done because for individuals, for people to be pulled, I mean, I called 911 because I want to help for my sister. And then the whole situation just got so that it, he thought maybe she had a mental problem. And then they thought I had a mental problem, that I was having delusions because, you And it was just, I can't explain how I feel. I would read books, God would say, read Dr. Martin Luther King, read his books so you won't, there hate in your heart, so you won't, you know, follow what he did. And look at the Bible, you know, and, and I just, I'm still upset, I'm, I'm upset. But you can't hate all the police, there are black police that have done wrong. And I know that for a fact. So, you know, we have to pray for them and pray for the people that they've hurt. And I don't know what to tell you to do, but something has to be done. And I'm still, I'm sitting here and I still don't know what to do. And I try to obey God and I'm not gonna tell you, sometimes I don't get angry with God and I apologize to all of you here because I said that. When I'm angry and I had to ask him to forgive me for being angry because I don't understand, sometimes I don't understand why God let that happen to me. But God is just and we can't lean to our own understanding, it's a reason. He left Pharaoh, remember Pharaoh? And Pharaoh was treating his people wrong. And he wanted Pharaoh to let his people go. But he allowed Pharaoh to do what he did. But then the Egyptians that were the enemies of his people, they drowned in the Red Sea. And then his people, they went over on dry, remember the land was dry? And he opened up the Red Sea and they went across on dry land. So his enemies were defeated, his people's enemies were defeated. But he still, you know, he, you know, God, even the police that's bad, he loves them. And he, God told me to read about somebody named Manasseh, he was a king in Israel, read about him. And I read about, I'm sorry, forgive me if I offended anybody just now. Manasseh did a lot of terrible things, bad things. But then he repented. He asked God to forgive him for the things that he did. And he, he, you know, God forgave him. He did terrible, he did things really bad. And if his God's will read about Manasseh and keep praying for me, that I'll be fair. Because I read what, sometimes you gotta read what you saw. And I'll be a just woman. And I've been praying for this policeman and I didn't know if he has sons or not, but God wouldn't let me do anything to him as far as, he would just, he would tell me, pray for him. And read Doc, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was gonna say, I, I assumed like you were concluding, so I was just gonna thank you for your testimony.
Well, I thank God for helping me and I thank God for allowing me to see this beautiful place in this city called city council. I didn't even know this was in the city. And you come and you open up with prayer and that would help me so much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for being here this afternoon and thank you for your testimony this afternoon. We appreciate it.
Well, I thank God for you all.
Thank you.
Thank God, thank you, Jesus.
That concludes this hearing. This hearing will be recessed to the call of the chair. Thank you.